All right, Kathy, do you got everybody in your view now?
No, I can see from Jess to half of Melissa.
Half of Melissa. Just a half of Melissa. Let me see, let me see if I can see someone else. See, on our screen, we can see all of you. Moving out just a bit.
Let me see, can I blow? But now I can't see Jess, so.
Now she says she can't see Jess.
At all.
At all?
Uh, I see, I see her arm. There she is now, and yeah, now I don't see her.
She's gonna have to choose which people she wants to see.
Okay.
She's not gonna be able to see everybody.
Yes.
Okay.
So it just shows that this can't see.
She's not gonna be able to see.
It's all right, I'll stream it on YouTube, and that way I'll be able to get everybody.
Michelle, as far as we know, these, all the folks for the student recognitions are are just in the order that you've got, you received them, and.
This regular meeting of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. Interested members of the public are welcomed and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube/IST535 where the live stream video may be found. This board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. Present at this meeting are school board members, including Kathy Nathan, who will be attending remotely, Superintendent Kent Pekel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Director Amundson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, we provide an opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.0, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Uh, 3.0, comments to the board. As you know, we do not broadcast comments to the board, just as we do not publish emails to the board or text, um, the text of phone calls that board members receive. The Minnesota School Boards Association is clear that time at board meetings is not intended to be used by stakeholders for speeches to the community or their affiliated organizations. It's also important to note that especially during this election season, any kind of endorsement or disparagement of a candidate is not allowed. That said, this time is appropriate for speakers to agree, disagree, or offer an alternative to actual district initiatives, and if you have a question you want answered, please let us know that, and we will respond by phone or email. Each speaker will have three minutes. Ms. Severson will be keeping time, and she's good at that. When your name is called, please have a seat in front of the microphone at the table right here, state your name, and whether you are a resident of the school district. And our first speaker this evening is Wes Lund. Mr. Lund, welcome.
Thank you. I'm basically gonna read a letter that I just gave Michelle that I've directed to the board. Honorable board members, in my letters to you dated December 9th, 2021, and January 14th, 2022, as well as my statement to the Rochester School Board during the January 20th, 2022 Listening Session, I establish in specific detail that the board's Equity Core belief statement dated 8/31/2020, and the board's Equity Policy Statement adopted June 14th, 2021, they are grounded knowingly or unknowingly in a Marxist ideology and worldview. That worldview translates into a moral code that defines right and wrong behavior for our children in our public schools. It serves as a basis for defining what is true and real, particularly in this case of this letter.
Outreach, our first group to be recognized this evening, 4.01 Student Athletic Activities and Academic Recognitions. Dr. Pekel.
Chair Marvin, and board members, we have the privilege of recognizing a number of students and the educators and staff who work with them, and we are going to flow through here in the order in which Michelle received the information from staff. If I butcher anybody's name, my deep apologies, and it happens to me every day, all the time, but that doesn't make it right, so we'll try and move that. I'd invite you, when we get to the recognition that you are here to present, just come on up and walk around and come to the podium. I wonder if one of my cabinet colleagues might, we might be able to pull that forward a little bit since there's the, the light there, just so people aren't tripping over that. And then have your student, or students plural, if they are here with you, come up with you as well. And so, we are very excited to have the opportunity, and we have a really diverse set of folks who we are privileged to recognize. We put out an all-call, and we certainly always like to recognize our athletes, but today you're gonna see we get the chance to recognize artists and students who've succeeded academically and community service as well. So, let us start then with, is Jack Phaler here from Kellogg Middle School? Great, come on up, and you can tell us who you're here to honor, and if they're with you, they can join you, or otherwise you can just describe them. There we go, great. Yeah, just right up, well, you can use the, actually, it's your choice, you can use the ball. The podium's probably the easiest, let's do that.
Here, come here.
It's about you.
Yeah, exactly, so thanks for having us, first off, um, this is Eric, he's one of our sixth graders at Kellogg. I've been honored to be the Kellogg Math Coach for three years, and we participate in the National Math Counts Competition. This year, our team finished third at the Minnesota State, and Eric took second place overall as an individual. As a result, me and Eric were invited to go out to DC, me as the national coach and Eric as a student, where he finished 64th out of 226 as a sixth grader, so we're excited to see what the next two years will bring. Unfortunately, our assistant coach couldn't make it, Golden Pink, he's a 10th grader over at Century, who gives back to Kellogg, he was part of the program and helps us out, but we've had a fun year, and we're just excited to see what's gonna happen the next two years and see if Eric can keep on going.
And Eric, are your parents here? Would they wave?
Eric, is there anything that you'd like to, like us to know about math or the competition? Were you nervous, or were you confident that it was gonna work out?
I was kind of nervous. I was not sure, I didn't actually know that I would get Nationals. It was kind of a surprise, but.
Well, it is fantastic, and thank you, and thank you for all that you've been doing, and let's recognize it one more time. And next, we have Claire Sagsdun, I hope I'm saying that right, are you here, Claire?
I'm here for Claire.
Okay, great, so you were, come on up, tell us who you're here to recognize.
All right, I guess I should start with an introduction. I'm Tim Morgenstern, I am the Assistant Head Coach at John Marshall High School in the Speech and Debate Program. So we're here to recognize some of our national qualifiers and state qualifiers for the, for speech and debate, which is growing here in Rochester, and I'm excited to see it. It was my first year as a coach here, I coached in the cities, but I was happy to come down here, and John Marshall qualified two people to the national tournament. I don't see either of them here, but I do see one of my state qualifiers, so if you wanna come on up. So along with Mayo High School and Century High School, I think combined, we, we did over a dozen students went to the state meet this year, and John Marshall had nine students, and Odile here qualified in the category of poetry, and she did fantastic, and we will be, I will be headed to Louisville. be, I will be headed to Louisville on Friday with two of my students to compete at the national tournament, and very excited for that. So Odile, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Odile. And yeah, like he said, I participated in the category Poetry, where I took a bunch of poems from famous poets and put it all together in a script that I really liked. It's been a fantastic season, and Tim has really helped me and all of our, and all of my teammates really go to where we want to go and reach our full potential. So thank you for that.
We may be looking at our next youth poet laureate right here. And do you have parents or anyone with you this evening?
My dad.
Thank you, congratulations. And next on the list is Ann Pagel. Ann here? And we have another substitute, Mr. Queasy.
He doesn't look anything like Ann.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members. Dr. Pekel, I am stepping in for Ann Pagel this evening. The great news about Ann Pagel is the end of the school year came, and she retired. So I called her today and asked her if she was going to come down here, and she says, no, Mark, I'm going to hand this one over to you. So as duties as assigned, as we say. I'm not sure we have any of our BPA qualifiers for Century, but if they are here, can you please come forward? Okay. So we had several students who placed at the state level and were actually able to go on. Han Zhu, Advanced Accounting, first place. Financial Math and Analysis Concepts, fourth place. Parliamentary Procedures and Concepts, third place. Ethan Zhang, Fundamentals of Accounting, was third place. Logan Duran, Primary Parliamentary Procedures, fourth place. Daniel Wang and Dean Wang, Fundamentals of Desktop Publishing, first place. User Experience Design and Use of Adobe, first place. And then Brandon McCready was Presentation Management. Health Leadership Special Topics was second place. So we want to say congratulations to those students on behalf of Century High School.
Fantastic.
Would you just want me to, I'm going to continue on here since I helped Michelle submit several of these here. I'm going to have Tom Brown, our adapted softball coach, please come up and talk about our adapted softball team.
Good afternoon. Like Mr. Queasy said, I'm, I'm Tom Brown, and I'm the head coach of Rochester Raiders Adaptive Softball Team. Here today with me is our senior graduated captain, this is Stuart Patterson, and my assistant coach, Caleb Gannon. We're an adaptive softball team with 14 players, both boys and girls. We have players from Century, John Marshall, and Mayo High School. We have a player from Kellogg Middle School, and we have four players from Byron, and Byron Middle and High Schools. We play our games in a gym, and we use wiffle balls and bats. This last weekend, we competed in the Adaptive Softball Tournament in Chanhas in Minnesota. We won our first game versus Osseo 15-2 in five innings. We lost our state semifinal game 10-11 to Anoka Hennepin, and we lost our third-place game 9-13 versus Robinsdale. We ate out, we stayed in a hotel, and we had two graduates introduced in their caps and gowns prior to our state semifinal game. Yeah, Stuart and another player of ours, Noah Toman, they're both Century graduates. They chose to come play softball with us instead of graduating that day. So their parents had a great idea, and Minnesota State High School League allowed us to have those kiddos introduced with their caps and gowns on prior to the game, so it was awesome. And lastly, I just would like to tell you that our goal was to give our players a fun and exciting state tournament experience, and we achieved that goal. We ended our season 5-5, and through all of our games, we made a lot of lasting memories. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much for letting us come here today.
And Stuart, do you have anyone here with you this evening?
My, my mom and dad.
There they are.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I usually feel the same way about speaking here, Stuart.
Next up is Evelyn Kim. Evelyn is an orchestra student for us at Century High School, and she was selected to the All-State Orchestra for Century High School. Next, Maya Ebling. Maya, if you'd please come up, please. I told Maya to limit her speech to under five minutes, and I thought she was going to walk out on me here. I'm extremely excited to introduce Maya, and not only is she a great student for us in Rochester Public Schools, she broke a barrier this year. She was the first ever state qualifier for wrestling for Rochester Public Schools, and placed for us at the state tournament. And as a, as a wrestling advocate and a person who helped write the bylaw to give these young women the opportunity, I'm, I feel truly blessed to be standing here next to her and watch her participate in this program. So, and this all happened on the 50th anniversary of Title IX for the State High School League. So a lot of celebration throughout the year. We had a great celebration at the state tournament as to what it means to be a female and a female athlete now in Minnesota, and we are very proud of her. And Ms. Kous, who will come up in a minute, actually had the opportunity as a board member to strike medals on those first ever female athletes. So on behalf of Century High School, congratulations. And your mom and dad are here this evening, so if they would wave to us, please. She has thought about this. She does want to say a few things.
Hi, I'm Maya Ebling. I'm really excited to have a great season next year, and I'm excited to grow the girls wrestling.
Awesome.
Next, I'm going to have Ms. Kous come up and her students, and then we'll have one more student after that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Kous, and I'm a band record at Century High School. This past year, we had four students that participated in the 21-22 Minnesota Music Educators Association All-State Band Program. With us tonight is Sean Erickson. Other participants were Elena Thompson, Grant Delacy, and Ben Malm. The All-State Program is a competitive audition process, so Sean auditions last March, so March of 2021, and was selected, participated in a week-long camp in August, and then performed once again this February at Orchestra Hall. So we congratulate Sean, and we got audition results back. Sean will be back with many more friends this year for the 22-23, but we'd like to recognize Sean and the other three for their involvement this past year.
And Sean, do you have anyone here with you?
I do not tonight.
You're going to need to play something. So, next time, for sure.
I play clarinet.
Oh, well, anytime, show up anytime, and you can play.
Got it.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Marvin Cowbell, Cowbell here. All right, up next, Maria Hansen. And we saved the last one here for us. If she would please come up. The Minnesota State High School League has what we call a AAA Award, and it's honoring students that excel in academics, arts, and athletics. And I'll have Ms. Kous talk about this young lady's arts experiences first.
Maria has been a four-year member of the band program at Century, just a tremendously hardworking and dedicated member in the classroom and the many facets of the music world that extend beyond the classroom. And I know her other teachers would say the same about her academics as well. Hung in there through a couple of years of non-traditional band experiences in the high school, and then when we were able to return to many of our in-person performance opportunities this year, was just a tremendous leader for us, represented Century in the Big Nine Select Band, another thing we were able to bring back to in-personful happening this year. So excelling there in the arts and the academics portion.
And as Ms. Kous said, she accelerates very well in the fine arts, but her GPA, am I okay to share this? Okay. I always ask the students ahead of time if I'm okay to share this, but 4.61 GPA. Eight AP courses. She was all-state in lacrosse. She was all-state in soccer. She was a participant in soccer, Nordic ski, and she's a rugged lacrosse player. I've had an opportunity to watch her with a stick all spring. And so we're very proud of her being selected as the Region 1A representative and one of the finalists for the Minnesota State High School League AAA. They honored them at the state basketball tournament where she got a chance to be at a banquet and then got on the floor and got on the Jumbotron and everything at the arena. So again, do you want to say anything and introduce your mom and dad for us?
My mom and dad are back. I just want to say thank you for this recognition. It's an honor.
And that concludes our list. Thank you very much again for the opportunities for these students, student athletes, and students and activities.
Thank you. Let's, let's move on to, if it's acceptable, John Marshall. I see Mr. Urkey here. I also have on the list Michael Hutchins, one of our business education teachers. So anyone from JM who's, who's here to recognize some excellence, come on down.
Hello. I'm Mike Hutchins here from John Marshall. And we had this year on, in our BPA program, we had three national qualifiers right here. We had Radica, Odile, once again, and Mimi. So all three of them competed at the regional competition here at RCDC, and then qualified for state. And then at the state conference in Minneapolis, all three of them qualified for the national conference in Dallas this year, on which Odile and Mimi actually went and competed, and finished, I believe, as top 10 or top 12, I can't remember what it was, in a website design. And then Radica has actually, two times, for the past two years, has qualified for Nationals. Last year, obviously, online, and then this year in person, which she was not able to attend this year. But amazing work. This is the most we've ever had at John Marshall, was all three of them qualifying. So amazing work, ladies. Do you have any parents you want to represent here?
With me, I have my sister Namrata. It's right over there.
Her dad, back there. Thank you, guys. Awesome work.
Congratulations. Wow.
There's a certain website I'd like you to help us redesign. Just a certain organization. I don't know which one. Okay, I love it. And hearing that's our folks from John Marshall, let's move on to Mayo High School. I see Mr. Priggy here. I don't know if I see Mr. Whitney, but we'll have our lead principal.
Well, it is evening, so good evening, everybody. So I am not Mr. Whitney. I'm here to pitch hit for him. He, he just sent me a picture of the region baseball tournament that he's running right now. So yeah, he's a little busy, but it's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce a couple of groups. And first off, we flipped a coin in Ms. Munson, if you want to start making your way up here. We have a fantastic teacher, director in Ms. Munson, and our plays and our musicals are second to none. And with tons of awards, I'm not going to steal any of her thunder. I'm just going to move out of the way now. But without further ado, Ms. Munson.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Priggy. And thank you Superintendent Pekel and Chair Marvin, the board, and the cabinet for allowing time for public recognition of excellence. I'm Amy Munson. I'm one of seven stage door directors through the course of three different types of performances. Joining me tonight are Jennifer Humke and Troy Kowalski. Also, Erin Cole is our music director. Kim Hill, one-act director. Christopher Smith, technical director. And Megan Shelley is our choreographer. Also tonight, we have some actors and technicians with us here. Sophia and Julia Sanchez are stage managers. And then Sydney Grayler, performer and costumer, right? Yeah. Anybody else sneak in? Vern laughed. Okay. And then Vern, a costumer. It has been a stellar year of successes for extracurricular theater at Mayo, which includes fall musical, The Addams Family, one-act play Flowers for Algernon, and spring play Clue onstage. And I'm thrilled that we were able to perform these three productions for approximately 4,000 community members in our community, despite the challenges of the pandemic. And I'm also grateful that many of you attended our shows as well. I'm incredibly proud of each of our 118 students. 80% this year were brand new to Stage Door. They were eager to learn anything we could teach them, and their investments showed. You may have received list of honors announcements from Mayo High School administrators in December, February, April, or a press release last month in May, so I will only hit the pertinent highlights now. One-act play advanced to sections for the seventh year in a row, and last year performing at state festival. And Kim Hill could not attend tonight, but on her behalf, I want to extend gratitude for supporting student activities and opportunities in theater. Our Mayo High School Stage Door Theater Program participates in the Hennepin Theater Trust Spotlight Education Program, and Spotlight provides opportunities for students to enhance their interests in theater, to train with professionals, to sharpen skills through extra classes, to better understand theater beyond high school, and to receive critical feedback on their current high school performances. While I already think that these students are pretty awesome, I ask Hennepin Theater Trust professionals for unbiased evaluation, so our students and our program can keep growing in pertinent ways. Adjudicators evaluated our program for The Addams Family and for Clue. Receiving any honors can best be equated with the Tony Awards, recognizing professional theater at the high school level. The Addams Family received 15 awards and honors, including outstanding overall production and outstanding orchestration and music. Clue received 25 honors and awards, the most that Stage Door has ever received. For being what Hennepin Theater Trust says the best of Minnesota high school theater, students from the Cast Crew and Pitt Orchestra will perform a medley from The Addams Family at an event called Spotlight Showcase at the State Theater in Minneapolis on June 14. Additionally, four seniors and two juniors have been selected by the professionals at Hennepin Theater Trust to highlight their talents. The showcase event participants are Aaron Stokig as showcase stage manager, Laura Lee Lewis as featured performer, William Bradley, and Max Spinner as showcase orchestra musicians, and they only selected six, and we got two. Ally Week as showcase featured dancer. only selected six, and we got two. Ally Week as showcase featured dancer, and she was missing from the May press release because of timing. And William Lauden, triple threat finalist. He is one of eight boys selected in the state of Minnesota at this distinction. And if he wins, because he's only got to beat seven, he goes to New York City for two weeks to train with professionals and to compete in the National Jimmy Awards. All of these six students couldn't be here tonight, regretfully, but they're rehearsing in the cities tonight for showcase. So thank you for supporting directors who strive to foster students' growth and learning. Thank you for recognizing student excellence, and thank you for supporting the arts. And I think we do have some parents here tonight.
Parents?
For all of us, theater has been really important. I know these two especially. We all got very behind on sleep and homework, but it's some of the highlights of our day. I was actually lucky enough to actually get an award for my first time for the show. I was honorable mention for directing, technical leader, thank you, sorry. This is why I'm not acting. But it's just the highlight of our day, and since we get to do a little bit in the summer, it's just making everything much more enjoyable.
Thank you all so much.
Again, if you have the opportunity to come out to any of the plays or musicals, I highly recommend it. I don't think I've missed one in the 10 years I've been there at Mayo. So next up, as Mrs. Preby comes up, talk a little bit about BPA and business. Ms. Preby, like Ms. Munson, have really grown their programs, and you know, that's just a testament to, you know, their dedication to Mayo High School and the things that they do. So, Ms. Preby.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone, for allowing us to be here tonight. BPA, you know, you've heard the other schools get awarded or be reminded or told to you what they did. BPA stands for Business Professionals of America. It's an organization that allows students to be able to show their skills that they have in a variety of areas, not just business, but specifically business marketing, anything with computer programming, desktop publishing, as you heard, speech, website design. It's a wide range of skillsets that these kids can really share with others. And who I have here tonight is Hannah LaMasters. She's been my student for three years. She was an intro to business first year, then she was in BPA the next two years with me. She survived COVID online everything, and she also qualified for Nationals via COVID online. This year, she also competed, and along with her and five of her teammates, all went up to the state conference, and they all were finalists. Hannah was fifth place in the state in banking and finance, and she was also part of a small business management team, as well as her other three students were part of a small business management team, and again, all finalists. Hannah qualified for Nationals, went down to Dallas with the John Marshall students, and competed very, very well. She was 17th out of 64 in the banking and finance, and 18th out of 239 in the open financial math and analysis. I can't take credit for any of that financial math and analysis instruction. We have to give our math department fair credit there. But it has been such a joy to work with Hannah these last three years. The growth that she has shown has been amazing, and Lincoln has got a great student coming to their college, and I look forward to following her and seeing what the future holds. Before I let Hannah speak here, because I know she has a speech prepared, I'm just kidding. Again, as others have mentioned, and Amy specifically, to be able to support electives, activities, and things of our nature is so important to the students, because it gives them an opportunity to be able to branch out in areas that they might not have done before. I wasn't quite sure if Hannah would want to do this after I had her as a sophomore in intro to business, but she took the chance, and she did. And to be supported by the school district in our areas is amazing. Like, I see three people on the board that supported us, one behind me here, with our finance camp, and that was just amazing. So thank you. And Hannah, if you want to say anything?
Yeah. First of all, I do want to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Preby. She's been a huge help these last three years. It's been really exciting. Just BPA in general has been such a cool opportunity, because as Mrs. Preby was saying, there are so many different things you can do with it. So really, anybody who's even relatively interested in business should definitely try it and just see if it's for them. Yeah, and thank you to my parents, too. They've been a huge help. They're online, so they couldn't be here today, but huge thank you to them. And yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, I don't think we have anybody else, but I want to thank you for the opportunity. We have amazing kids in this school district and amazing kids at Mayo, and I just want to congratulate all of them that are being recognized tonight. A 4.61 GPA. I probably would need to do some addition on mine to get to there. But anyways, thank you for the opportunity, and go Spartans.
I believe that covers all of our recognitions, but I, just in case, there was something that didn't get translated. Is anybody else here for the purpose of recognizing student accomplishment or excellence? Okay, Madam Chair, I think we are complete.
All right. We will move to 4.02, the Along Pilot Update. Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Marvin and Directors of the School Board, as board members know, my previous job before coming to Rochester involved doing research on relationships. And at some point, there was a foundation and a nonprofit organization that came to us and said, "We want to build an app that is based on the findings of some of your research." And that foundation was called the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative. It is the philanthropic arm of Facebook founder and CEO Mark Zuckerberg and his wife, Dr. Priscilla Chan, who's a pediatrician. And the nonprofit is called Gradient Learning that they support. And they built an app called Along. And when I got to Rochester, they said, "We've now got this app created to strengthen teacher-student relationships. Would you be interested in helping us pilot it?" And so I asked our Executive Director of Equity and Engagement, Will Ruffin II, if he would be interested in working with some staff across the district to pilot this app. And so what we have been doing this year has been what I think is going to be a hallmark of our new strategic plan, which is trying innovative new things, seeing what works, learning some lessons, and continuing and building if we find something that seems like a good fit. And so we wanted to give the board a glimpse of this. We were provided with some philanthropic support from the foundation that made this work possible, but I really want to thank Will for his leadership in bringing this to life. So, Mr. Ruffin.
All right. Thank you, Chair Marvin and School Board members. Like Dr. Pecal said, I'm here to give you an update on some software that many of our teachers have used throughout the school year. So first, I just want to start with what is the Along? Along is some software that was created throughout the pandemic, just thinking about how students have lost that sense of connectivity with each other, that sense of connectivity with their classroom teachers, and even other people that the pandemic has caused them to lose that connectivity to. So if you think about it right here, this is a screenshot from their webpage, and it says, "We want to help each student feel seen and understood." So the software was built to try to reconnect students to their classroom teachers. And for the purpose of the pilot, we extended the invitation out to people beyond the classroom. So you have social workers, you have counselors, you have different coordinators throughout our district who also piloted the software. So what I want to do quickly is just show you what it looks like, so you have a better understanding of when we get to the questions. So this is what it looks like from the staff perspective. So the staff can pick some pre-made questions. These questions were research-based, or the staff member can create their own question for the students to answer. In true teacher fashion, the adult would model what this would look like. In this case, this person chose a video. After that, the teacher would send the question out to all of their students. I should also let you know that some staff chose a small group, some chose to pilot this with their entire classroom. So there's a mixture. The students can then respond to the teacher's prompts. They can respond through audio, they can respond through text, or they can respond with their own video as well. So then on the educator's end, this is what it looks like for the teacher. They get to see which platform the students chose to respond with, and then the teacher also gets to respond back to the student. So now, what I want to do is just show you which schools participated. We had seven schools, Bishop Friedel, Gage, Mayo, John Marshall, Lincoln K., and Riverside. From those schools, we had 57 total staff members participate in this pilot. 783 students total across those seven schools. Here's some of the things that we found at the end of the pilot. So before using Along, how often does your teacher do the following? And I won't read all of them, but I will point out some. My teacher showed me that I mattered to them. So if you can see on number four, it says, "Almost always." We have 213 students who answered that. Eighty-six students said "often." That's quite a huge number. My teacher challenged me to be my best. My teacher helped me accomplish tasks or goals. So you can just see some of the questions or some of the feedback that we're trying to get from our students. During or after the pilot, how often does your teacher do the following? We just asked the same questions. The average scores pretty much stayed the same within the three-point range, but we now have more students in the "almost always" category than we did before. So our numbers within the range has increased or decreased if they chose rarely or sometimes previously. We also asked, "How much do you agree with the following statement?" And again, Along has helped my teacher get to know me. Average score of three out of four. 120 students said strongly agree. 170 students chose agree. Along has helped me get to know my teacher. I look forward to receiving a new reflection question from my teacher. That one kind of surprised me. Many of the students actually look forward to receiving this reflection. As you can see, when I get down to about the fifth one down, my teacher uses what I shared through Along in their teaching. That has one of the lowest scores of 2.6. The teachers chose how they rolled this out in their classroom. And the point of the pilot was to get to know the student, not necessarily to tie what they learned from the student back into the classroom. So that's why you see a dip in the score there. It wasn't the point of the program. Just some quick demographic data of the different student groups who chose to participate. So elementary students, we had 175 students, middle school, 90, and high school, 86 students. You can also see the breakdown there. Just more demographic breakdown for you. Then when we related to language. What I would like to do now is just read one comment from one of the teachers. I have several of these, but this is the one that stood out to me the most. "I just wanted to say that I really enjoy this platform. The comments from my frequent responders have been amazing, and they have told me on numerous occasions how much they appreciate it, being able to interact." Students then responded to those reflections 125 times, for a percentage of 86%. Looking at Friedel, 32 reflections were sent out. Students viewed them 220 times and responded 210 times, for 90%. 98% response rate at Gage. John Marshall, 85%. Lincoln K., 88% response rate from 418 reflections. That's a lot. Mayo High School sent out 300, or excuse me, 76 reflections, and students viewed them 390 times and responded 289 times, for 75%. Those are the numbers for Riverside, 88% response rate. And I'll stop there and ask you if you have any questions. Before you do, I just want to say that the software was free. It didn't cost the district any money, and the teachers were compensated for their time for piloting the software.
Any questions? Yep, Ms. Workman.
So this is all online. So this is all online, correct?
Yes.
Were you able to observe any carryover into the classroom as a result of this in terms of how students interacted with each other or with their teachers?
I was not able to observe them, no. I'm not in the school buildings.
But I mean, did you get any feedback on that, or maybe it's something you haven't asked for?
I haven't asked for that yet. Good question, though.
Mr. Barlow?
More of a statement of appreciation. Just as there are different learning styles, I appreciate the fact that in terms of the response, there were different options available, which is acknowledging that students communicate differently, and how each style or response style is valued. And I just thought that was very important.
I should also say that this was a brand-new software. This was the first time that this has been used throughout the country. There are only two districts who piloted, and our district was one of them. So if teachers choose to use this going forward, they can, because the product is free and it will always be free. So if this is a resource that we can put in the hands of our teachers, it will not cost us anything going forward.
That was going to be my question, is how is this going to be used in the future, but it's no cost to the district.
Mine reader.
We like that.
And in terms of, we, Will and I and many others spent half of the day today, and we'll spend half the day tomorrow, at our Belonging and Behavior Summit, which is taking lessons learned from the past year and looking ahead to the following year. It was interesting to me that several schools were talking about incorporating Along into their efforts to strengthen student belonging next year. So it was, I think, an example of one of those things that you start. And Director Workman, there are classroom lessons that can complement the dialogue piece in the portfolio.
Good to know. Thank you.
So yeah, I thought it was an encouraging sign that some of them were thinking of using this as a tool. And I think it's the kind of innovation that, you know, in the home of the Mayo Clinic, Rochester Public Schools should be driving innovation nationally. And so I think, as Will points out, this was an appropriate example of us doing that. And so I hope we can do more of it.
Thank you, Mr. Ruffin.
Thank you.
4.03 Student Learning Project Presentations. I believe we have two students who will be meeting with us, Dr. Pecal.
Chair Marvin and board members, as you know, all of us really value the opportunity to interact with students. And I've had the chance in the year I've been here to interact with many. You're going to meet two of the most impressive that I've met. They both happen to be at Century High School, but that isn't, they don't have any sort of monopoly on the market of student leadership. These are two students who both reached out to me with two totally separate ideas that they were thinking a lot about. And we talked over the course of the year about those ideas. And what I, in talking with our chair and vice chair in our executive committee meeting, think is a really good use of the board's time and the community's time, is just to hear these thoughts from two of our student leaders. We don't bring this to you for any board action. I can tell you from the administration, we'll be taking both of these ideas over the summer and next year, and considering incorporating them into our future work. But for now, I want to just have the chance to give you a brief glimpse of the innovative kinds of thinking that some of our students are doing about the quality of teaching, learning, and really, school culture in our district. So Thomas Tyler is going to start us out. He has done some interesting work in thinking about, how might we help high school teachers continually improve the quality of instruction and relationship building that happens in their classes? And so he came to see me with an interesting and innovative idea, and he has had conversations with many across the district, and is going to give you a quick overview of his proposal, which, as I mentioned, we will be talking with teachers and our Rochester Education Association colleagues and others with in the months ahead. Thomas?
Before I start, I want to say thank you to all of the teachers and students, individuals that work. It definitely wouldn't be at this stage without them. So to start, this is called Feedback Surveys for Educators. It would affect only high school students, and it would provide educators with easily usable pre-made feedback surveys that they could provide to students. that they could provide to students over the course of the year, and so that they are able to make changes to students' academic environments, and so students can improve their level of success in the classroom as the course is ongoing. And so, what else? This, a feedback survey is made up of two parts. One, the first section is completely anonymous, and it's quantitative. And these are the questions with the Likert scale, the five options scale. And then, the second section is completely non-anonymous, and these are the open-ended qualitative questions. And so, the proposal is that Rochester Public Schools would highly encourage, but not require educators to provide these feedback surveys to students. And it would be recommended that students receive at least two feedback surveys for every semester of the school year, so they're able to see changes to their educational environments as the course is ongoing. So why does it matter? As the, so this will achieve three goals. The first, it will facilitate the amplification of student voice. And especially in the classroom, there's not a lot of student voice, and students largely aren't able to impact their educational environments. Secondly, it would empower students to reach their greatest academic potentials as they're directly able to influence their environments. And then, lastly, it would inspire educators to move forward as they take student feedback into consideration and make changes to students' educational environments. So this is what a, these are some examples of questions on the feedback survey. So on the section one, this is the quantitative anonymous section. One example is, "My teacher provides me with the guidance necessary to complete my assignments effectively." And we also have questions like, "I believe that my classroom is a positive community." And then, section two, this is the non-anonymous section that's open-ended. And one example is, "What specific things can your teacher do to help you improve your level of success in this class?" And we also have a self-reflection question, and we're looking to do more of that. So are there any questions?
Ms. Workman?
I have a question, but I think I'm going to direct it to the superintendent, because this would probably put you on the spot. So I'll direct it to Dr. Pekel. So in the Student Concerns Process Proposal that was included as an attachment here, it was stated, "Policy 413, while comprehensively described in the school board, policies lacks a specific system in which students are able to follow and relies on students to do their own outside research. It states that an investigation will take place, but how? And what are the steps a student should take?" So people don't always understand that the policies are the "what" and the procedures are the "how." So the procedure that's attached with this that I'm wondering if this would address it at least in part says, "Students are strongly encouraged to notify the Title IX Coordinator of sexual harassment allegations, but may report allegations to any school district employee. A school district employee who receives a report from a student is responsible for immediately notifying the Title IX Coordinator." And then, Procedure 413A.1 is the actual form. So I'm wondering if this procedure addresses any of what the students were getting at? And if it doesn't, if there's something that the policy committee might want to consider to review that procedure in consultation with you and any appropriate cabinet members?
Yeah, thank you, Director Workman. That actually is the item for the next student update that Salma is going to do in a moment. So we will come to that one in a minute. And yes, I think that consideration at the policy committee might be a great place to take the overview that Salma is going to give us in a second. I just have to say, when you said that the question would be for the superintendent, so Thomas, in my mind, it's only a matter of time before Thomas is the superintendent. You're ahead of me.
Yep, Karen.
I just have curiosity. Does this topic come to you as a question from you as a student? Or you potentially as a future educator, future superintendent?
Well, I think, yeah, I think so. And this, I think this could affect a lot of students in a very positive way.
I guess what I'm asking is that, do you plan to go into education? Is that one of your potential?
Not exactly.
Okay, so more from the student's perspective?
Possibly.
Okay, so Thomas, that's the wrong answer. You should say, "Of course, you want to become an educator and then a superintendent." Although, teaching's more fun.
I do have a brief question, Thomas, if I could. What would be one concern, if we move forward with this voluntary feedback surveys? What would be one concern that we would need to be very careful about? Something that you'd urge us to, you've talked about the potential benefits of giving teachers. And I think a lot of teachers choose to do this. I did when I was teaching high school, I did something like this. But we don't have something that's used across the board, and teachers have to take their time to invent their own, and you've created one. So if we went down this road of encouraging but not requiring teachers to use this, what's something that we would need to be attentive to as we did that?
Well, I think just phrasing the questions to be the most effective as possible in providing accurate feedback to teachers.
Yeah, we learned it's not as easy to write a good question as one might.
Yeah.
I sent Thomas to go talk to Dr. Peter Ruck, our research director, and he came back and said, "Well, that wasn't as simple as I thought it was." That was great, though.
Yes, Dr. Garcia.
I just want to make a comment, I guess maybe in the spirit of Director Workman's response, is that I feel like something like this would give power, certainly give power to the student voice, because something like going to a Title IX coordinator, it's quite a formal process, and the concern may not rise to the level of like, "I feel that this particular civil right of mine has been offended against. It's just I want to be able to have a direct conversation." And so you can elect as a student to give non-anonymous feedback more immediately, and there doesn't have to be this kind of long, drawn-out process. So I, you know, as an educator, I would appreciate something like this, too.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, again, we've got two different student projects, and I think that they're going to really enhance each other. But Thomas, yours specifically is about how the teacher teaches and students being able to communicate with their teachers in terms of, "This is what's really working for me, and this is something I wish you would consider." Way back in the day, we used to do this routinely. Ask, have a form, and have our students fill it out. And one thing that I discovered was that I talk way too fast. No student had ever told me that before, but I got a number of students who, online, let me, let me know. So it was, for me, as an educator, it was really useful. So, and Mr. Barlow?
Sure, Thomas. My question is, so what prompted you to go down this pathway? Was it something you experienced or feedback from fellow students? Without putting you on the spot, but I think this is some kind of great value. And so I'm curious as to what lit the flame?
Well, it was really just observing the classroom environment and the concerns of students that they're expressing to their friends. And I, like, we, not every teacher provides students with the opportunity to provide their feedback, their concerns. And so I just thought this could be useful in going in that direction.
Awesome, thank you.
It's really great, I want to thank you for raising this. It's pretty impressive when someone at your point in life sticks to something like this. And I think the one point that I don't know was in your presentation, but you and I talked about it a lot, at least in your current recommendation, these surveys would not go to the principal or anyone else in the building. It's just for the teacher.
Just the teacher.
So that that teacher has that feedback.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next student leader to give the board and the community a sense of some of her thinking is Salma Abdi, who's also a Century High School student. And I've been proud that she has been my mentee through our community mentoring program this year. And so as Salma and I talked about what project she might be interested in undertaking, the one that she's going to tell you about, and that we've already had a little bit of discussion about, came up. And so it's been exciting. I also am excited to say that Salma is now one of our proud graduates, and will be headed to the University of Minnesota.
And, Salma, you're sort of ubiquitous. We see you everywhere. And you're another one who, given a few years, you could take his job. I mean, not that, not that we want to get rid of you, but I mean, amazing, amazing, talented young woman.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Marvin, Superintendent Pekel, and board members. My name is Salma, and I just wanted to talk to you guys through the Policy Proposal for Student Concerns Process, which I've been working on the past year in the Mentorship in the Community Program. So a little bit of background on it. So Rochester Public Schools doesn't have a system that students can use to advocate for themselves when they believe a school staff member has harassed them or acted with bias based on race or other factors. So my project, a lot of it focused on racial harassment specifically, but in reality, you know, a lot of this process and this proposal really goes to all protected classes and gives all students the agency to advocate for themselves. So the RPS Student Handbook doesn't clearly provide a pathway for addressing student concerns about harassment or bias that also assures staffs due process. I'll get more into some of the specific policies, because I did read the entire Student Handbook and Board Policies, if you haven't. So when issues of harassment or bias are addressed through RPS's current process, you know, there's a lot of miscommunication, you know, a lot of, there isn't a lot of understanding on the student's side, because students do have to do research, students do have to take, make the effort to look for exactly what they should do, who should they report it to. You know, there isn't any specific sort of pathway that is available to all students. So a new approach to investigating and acting on students' reports of bias and harassment is urgently needed in Rochester Public Schools. If ten years from now, twenty years from now, we don't want the same issues to constantly continue within RPS. We want there to be a huge cultural shift within RPS and making sure that, once a student reports something, and many students report similar themes of bias or similar themes of issues, we want to make sure that it stops then and there. And we want to make sure that students are able to be heard and feel heard and, you know, make sure that their perception of RPS's system is good. So the new approach should protect the rights of both staff and students, you know, especially in regards to things like employment law. In RPS, we'll also work to eliminate harassment and bias from RPS. So as I did say, that I looked at some of the things, the existing RPS policies. The first one I want to point out is Section 400 Code 13 Subsection 2D of the Board Policies, which does state, as Director Workman is stated, "The school district will act to investigate all complaints, either formal or informal, verbal or written, of harassment or violence," and then states some of the protected classes that exist, "and to discipline or take appropriate action against any student, teacher, administrator, or other school district personnel to have violated this policy." And then this, I'm just going to go through the existing ones and then go into some of my analysis. The Student Handbook references Policy 413 and District Stance by categorizing harassment as a Level II offense. The next thing is the RPS Equity Statement that came out a couple of years ago, stating that, "We believe that all students and, we all, we believe all staff and students deserve a space to be their authentic selves. We have a collective responsibility to ensure our schools provide a caring, supportive, and anti-oppressive environment. School communities should support the health, positive development of students and help them grow their unique gifts and talents." And then the last thing is a new one that, you know, is really a big part of the solution I've been thinking of. So the RPS Strategic Action Plan for 2022 to 2025. So Objective A specifically focusing on that, which builds a positive school climate and safety for all students and staff. And I think that's truly the end goal of my project, making sure that every single person is able to thrive within our school community. And then especially focusing on 8.2, the student and staff voice, giving students the agency to advocate for themselves. So, yeah, Policy 413 comprehensively describes, you know, in the school part, while it's described, you know, it's, "We're going to investigate, but how are you going to investigate? What should a student do? Who should they go to?" There's not enough language around it, and you're expecting like middle school and high school and even elementary school students to take action to advocate for themselves, which is always a difficult thing. And so what steps should a student take? And then, Policy 413 additionally fails to provide students with the necessary protection when described in the Student Handbook. I didn't actually know about the Board Policies till I started my project. I really only knew about the Student Handbook. And when I looked at the Student Handbook, you know, a lot of it focused on punitive things. If a student does this, they're going to get in trouble. You know, it's, Policy 413 is actually only talked about in the Student Handbook as a Level II offense, really not describing what a student can do, who should you do, and what they should do. And then, Level II offense is really discussing like student-to-student issues if a student is facing harassment from another student. The RPS Equity Statement generally encompasses what the school district believes, but how do we ensure that our schools foster an equitable environment? How do we make sure that's happening? And then, Objective A, which also describes a desire to build a positive in-school climate, which is why creating a system of reporting allows, for one, record-keeping and ability to understand rising concerns within each school site. Once issues and concerns are catalogued, principals, administrators, and district officials are able to create a cultural shift within that school community, which is important, because we don't want the same issues constantly continuing generation after generation, student after student. So the proposal would be that RPS should develop and implement a clear process for responding to student reports of harassment and bias from RPS staff members that addresses student concerns and that protects the rights of staff members due to due process. So making sure that there is a sort of like a universal process that exists within RPS, that each school site sort of this exists. You know, there are like pieces that can be tailored to each specific school site, but making sure that this exists all across the school district, which is important if a student changes different schools, if students are talking to their friends at other schools and sort of, you know, there are differences within who's in charge of what, who's doing what, what's going on, and really how issues are being addressed at each school site. So as part of that new process, RPS should designate a staff member in each school program or department whose students should notify if they believe they've been subjected to harassment or bias. So someone every student knows, someone who's accessible to students, and someone who knows how to guide a student through the process within RPS. Whether this is a issue specifically at the school level, so talking, that person, they designate a staff member would help the student talk to the principal or the administrator, who can help them within that school district. And if it's a really big issue, and you may be going to the district and talking to district officials who are able to properly address that issue and that concern. And RPS should also designate a leader at the school district level in the Office of Equity and Engagement to support and coordinate the work of staff at each school who are responsible for reporting. So someone that all the staff members at each school site can report to, someone who is able to address, maybe like there's an issue that's happening in multiple school sites. What is the school district able to do to make sure, to ensure that doesn't happen again? And the new process envisioned by this proposal should also require RPS staff at each school who investigate reports of bias and harassment to explain that the school district will likely not be able to tell that student what action, any action was taken to address their concern. So this one really, this project came from my personal experience. And you did talk about me being everywhere, which is true. And as someone who's a part of the Minnesota Youth Council, which works with the Minnesota Department of Education, in my scenario, when I faced racial harassment, when I faced microaggressions, I didn't know what to do. I did my outside research. I reached out to people I knew at the Minnesota Department of Education, and I still struggled to know what to do, whether a reaction I had was an overreaction or an underreaction. So making sure, and even when I did report, one thing that really sort of, that I didn't know is that, due to employer-employee confidentiality, the school district cannot tell me exactly what you guys did. And I really struggled with that, because it didn't give me any closure, and there wasn't enough discussions around that. And I wish I knew that from the get-go. So, and to report an adult in the school community, it takes courage. You're asking students to look outside of every single sort of like authority issue we talked about, sort of, every single power structure that has always existed in our lives, and asking us to talk over that person, to make sure that we are heard. And we want, we want school districts, we want RPS. I would like to see RPS give students the protection and the agency to advocate for themselves. Because in the perfect world, a student wouldn't have to advocate for themselves, but they do. And we want to make sure that students know exactly what they can do, know that there is someone in their corner. know exactly what they can do, know that there is someone in their corner helping them through this process. Because a lot of the times, the kids who aren't coming up with these concerns, the students who aren't really reporting it, are the students who don't have parents who are going to help go to these meetings with them. They don't have the community, the platform, the resources to advocate for themselves. So this will allow every single student at RPS the ability to advocate for themselves and the ability to navigate this process.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Ms. Workman.
I just have one comment. I think you're going to give Thomas a run for his money in order to become a school superintendent. That was really, really well done, and I appreciate your thoughts. And this is something I think that, you know, students, when they do take it over, they do have that agency and certainly, well, I can't speak for the whole board, but I'll let Dr. Pekel speak to that if he wants to for a minute in terms of student agency.
Yeah, the, thank you Director Workman. I mean, in the strategic plan, I know I'm like a broken record on the strategic plan, new youth leadership initiative is prominently called for, and I think we have two examples tonight here of what that kind of support can, can lead to. One question I would have Salma is, it sounds like from your view of our policies, it's not so much the policies that need to change, it's a process of implementing those policies. Would you, did I, did I summarize your conclusion?
Yes. So it's not necessarily, that's why I said, oh, like a policy proposal for students' concerns process. There's no process that exists. All the language states that this is an issue, that the school district needs to address it, but how? The how is the bigger question, and I think that's why it's necessary that we have a specific process in place that students, that's easily accessible to students, and that students know.
Ms. McLaughlin.
And I'd like you to think about taking that a step further, that I think everything you're saying is great and great presentation, but also include in your thoughts in passing this forward, how to communicate that to the students. So it's great to have a policy, but then also we need to make sure that students know about it and that process, so that they can take advantage of that if they're in a situation that you're in.
Yeah, I've definitely thought of that, and it's one of the discussions I've had with some of the district officials that I talked to specifically, Will Rappin. And one of the things is that in order, like have, making sure that all the information that the school district has, that like student handbook is easily accessible, and making sure this process is easily accessible, like maybe having things like a form that students can fill out anonymously or non-anonymously, similar to sort of what Thomas was discussing, you know, like this reporting process and allowing students the agency to really discuss it and make sure that's, you know, there's like a QR code at every school. There's a, I would call it poster at every school, and that students know about it. I think that's what's important, like because it does exist. And sort of the outside research that I was, that I really discussed is that students, regardless of who they are, always have to do this more research. They have to take on this task of looking for it. But that's not how it should be. You know, it should be something that's discussed at, like freshman orientation, that's discussed on the first day of school, that teachers know, and any class of presentations that students have, they're talked about, it's talked about, and it's given to them.
I would also encourage thinking about putting it on our website.
Yes.
That would be a great place. If you're looking for research, it should be front and center there.
Mm-hmm.
Don't miss words.
Pardon?
Go ahead. Okay, certainly. Well, we don't want you to think it's your responsibility to do all this. We've heard you, I've heard you. Thank you. And it seems to me like you're not one of those students who have had your feet propped up on the desk or anything like that, but that you have been very attentive, focused, engaged, and that is of a great importance and value. Thank you for sharing your experience. And so, do you think your experience was unique, or that it is the reality of many other students as well?
I'm glad that you asked that. So actually, so part of this like year-long process, I wasn't just sitting here writing this two-page policy proposal, I was doing a lot of interviews of students at different schools. And it's, there are a lot of instances of this, that students either don't report, students don't know how to report. And, you know, students never feel heard, and if they do, they really struggle to understand what they can do about it. So a lot of, I did a lot of interviews, and I'm going to keep people's information confidential, but it is not a unique experience, and it happens to a lot of people. It's been happening for years, and it's going to continue happening if you don't have a specific process in place for students.
Dr. Garcia.
Yeah, I think, I appreciate that you did this. And I, I certainly love things like this because I think in certainly my generation and older, especially when they're adults in the room, kids were seen and not heard, and that was the preference, and that's not how you guys play. Right? And I appreciate that. So I think you have taken on the responsibility of kind of where we weren't doing the work that we needed to do, right? And we talked, we're talking about systems of power in play here. It benefits certain groups that other groups don't know how to make those complaints. And I would say that that's true too, even in Minnesota. So myself, if I'm feeling microaggressed against on a constant basis in the workplace, where am I going to go? Who am I going to go to? What does that process look like? And oftentimes, it's having to go through something pretty egregious before you, you feel empowered enough to make a change, and then you hit all these roadblocks. So I can appreciate that you and also Thomas, that you're both bringing, how do we resolve, like student voices need to be heard, and other people actually need to listen. And I think that if we implement a civil rights complaint process within the school district, that gives you additional agency, a kind of, levels out the playing field a little bit. And I think it also would provide some, some of this, you know, the equity and inclusivity that we're talking about, if we have this present, that we are shifting ourselves in that direction and kind of away from that 2015, right, like Office of Civil Rights Complaint issue. So I feel like I wish that this had been before us years ago, and I'm glad that it's here now, and I really appreciate that you brought it to our attention. And I, I love to support things like this.
Yeah. I'm, one thing I do really want to bring up is one, one of the interviews I did, someone said this. They're like, "A lot of the times, I don't want to say this because I don't want to ruin the vibe." And I think that's such an interesting comment because the vibe allows those in power and those privileged the opportunity to exist and continue to say harmful things. Just, and this is a general thing, whereas a student who is a part of a protected class, who's already marginalized, is the one who's constantly feeling uncomfortable, but they're the ones who have to take on this task of not ruining the vibe.
Salma, thank you so much. We really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Chair Marvin. Before we move on, I, I'm curious, I'd like to, not necessarily challenge, but more inquire. We want to be a district that is innovative, and I think this, without necessarily by plan, we've experienced student innovation here tonight. And I know our strategic action plan will have some elements of opportunity, but I would really like to see efforts like this highlighted during the course of the school year. And however we can do that, and I'm sure you're fully supportive of that, but our students are so, they're great, okay? They probably don't hear that often enough, and we may not communicate that as frequently as we should, but I would like our board to really take a more proactive role in encouraging, inviting, you know, because we can learn a lot.
Well said. Thank you.
Chair Marvin. Hi.
Oh.
[laughing]
I was hearing voices.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Nathan.
I think to build on Director Barlow's statement, Superintendent Pekel, it might also be interesting for our community to find out how students who might be interested in pursuing an opportunity like this that Salma and Thomas had with you this year, how, how that might happen in future years. You might get an outpouring of requests, so there might need to be some sort of application or selection process, but to the best of my knowledge, we've never really formalized that kind of superintendent mentorship. So that might be another way to highlight not just the initiatives by our students, but those kinds of formal opportunities.
Thank you. Great idea.
Then we will move on to 4.04, Dakota Middle School Mascot Reveal. Dr. Pekel.
Director Marvin, and Directors of the Board, it is really exciting for me. I'm going to ask Amelia Cordell, who's our Native American liaison, American Indian Parent Advisory Council Coordinator and Coach Chair Julie Ruzek, and Levi Lundak, our Principal of Dakota Middle School, and any other colleagues that are here with them. I think I have all of the group. We know we have an exciting school opening on the horizon, and through community input, a name was selected for the school, and now we're taking tonight the next step as we think about a mascot. Not yet visual representation, but we're on the way. So Amelia.
I'm going to start if you don't mind.
Or you.
Simply because this is Amelia's first time in front of the board, and normally when we have new staff, we get on the school board calendar to introduce our new staff to all of you and come back later on to talk about all of the amazing work they've been doing. Nothing about Amelia's entrance into Rochester Public Schools has been typical or normal. Day one was at the Minnesota American Indian Ed Conference with a group of us. She also successfully and beautifully navigated and facilitated an amazing powwow for our seniors, and here we are talking about the mascot for Dakota. So I would be remiss to not introduce, first of all, Amelia Cordell, our Native American liaison, to all of you. And just gush, Chair Barlow, you talked about recognizing greatness in our students and how we don't do that enough. I completely agree with you. We also don't do that enough for our staff. So thank you for taking the job. Thank you for jumping in with both feet. And now we get the privilege to hear a little bit about Dakota Middle School.
Take it away. Well, nice to meet you guys in person. I know you got to see my little face, my little one pager. I wanted to take this time to say thank you to those that were able to come out to the powwow. It was humble, but it was beautiful to see the community come, and thank you so much. And those that weren't able to come, I appreciate all your support, and I can't wait to keep working with you guys and giving you updates in this next year's process and years to come. So, thank you so much. So with Dakota Middle School. This is on Google, but APAC came together and they voted on a couple of options for the mascot. They narrowed it down to the top two choices, which were the bison or the stars, just based on their cultural significance. So that was before I came in and my position. So then after that, we met, we discussed creating a survey to send out to just the Native American families and students in the school district. We were battling about the thoughts about sending it out district-wide, or sending it out to the parents, or the students going into the school, or the staff, but we just wanted to keep it with the Native American students, just to keep the cultural significance. That's a huge importance. So that went out, and at APAC, the stars won by one vote. But when we sent it out district-wide, there are 175 Native American families. We got a little bit over 100 votes, so our voting pool was a lot bigger, but it was still a very close race. It was 51% to 49%. So it's going to be the Dakota bison. So what's next? We are working on finding a Native American artist. We were hopefully, hoping to find one, a local Native American artist to do the logo. That was one of APAC's desires. Unfortunately, that wasn't possible, but I was able to reach out to a gentleman named Sam Zimmerman. He is up in the Duluth area. He's actually a principal and educator up there, so he knows like the whole budget thing. He's ready to help us as best as possible. He's going to have a mock for me, APAC, and Levi to check out by June 15 of our logo, and then hopefully have something solid by the 4th of July.
Excellent. Amelia, I don't know much about bison. I've seen them before. Did any of them ever come with like a star on their forehead?
They're not like horses. It's usually just brown. But we did discuss, we did discuss though adding the star since it was so close. One of his ideas was to have like a silhouette of a bison, bison being the main focus, but in the background having some, some sort of stars.
There you go.
Since it was so close, and they're both so very important to us.
Questions or comments?
I love it.
No, it's awesome. And thank you for the work that you've put into this and getting the input that you did. And that's going to be an amazing logo for an amazing school.
And beyond the logo, it's really now working with the staff, the students, the families about the cultural significance of the bison, working on not inappropriately using the mascot. You know, sometimes, especially with Native American cultures, there has been significant misuse of mascots. So really making sure that we are working proactively with the site, with Levi, with the families, with the students, just to recognize the cultural significance and utilize the mascot appropriately and do some real education is, is the next step. Anything you want to add?
Nothing really. It's been a wonderfully informative process from an outsider's perspective. Even when we did send out that survey, we made sure we highlighted the names and their significance, and basically it was little reading so people understood the stars as part of the creation story and why the bison are so significant. And so I've been talking with Amelia and Julie on how we're going to use that with our staff and our students moving forwards, so they understand the walls and the halls they're walking through and the land, of course, that we acknowledge that we're on to really help further that message and, and respect what's there.
I just want to briefly add about Levi, your leadership. In the midst of leading one school and getting ready to open another school, I was continually impressed at how you paid attention as a leader to this issue, because this is how culture is built. And I really do believe of our school leaders, you are one of our master culture builders, because you take culture very seriously. And we know culture influences student achievement, and it doesn't just happen. And things like mascots and things help to define culture. And so, and those of us who were over at the farewell frieodel, I know there were many parents and others, but you as the leaders, we saw there again how your leadership has enabled the culture there, a culture of optimism and inclusion and belonging. And so I think this is something I was glad to see in the email. I was like, how is Levi paying attention to this mascot thing? He's got all these other things going on, but you took it very seriously because I think it's going to be part of this new culture you're going to build at Dakota. So I thank you for that, and we want to help some of our other leaders become, I think, as, as comfortable as you are with paying attention to the soft stuff of culture, because it's really critical for student success.
Thank you. It's a great opportunity to partner with APAC and Amelia. Now onboard, had a number of conversations and just look forward to developing that partnership and inviting, things like inviting APAC to our planning meetings around culture are part of the next steps. And I know you're going to reach out, see if someone wants to join us. We're glad to have them.
Thank you so much.
Go bison.
Do any school board members have updates or reports from the committee work they've been doing? Ms. Workman.
Just a brief summary, that the 92nd Legislative Session concluded on May 23, 2022, and provided no improvement, no new improvement to E12 funding. Part of that plan would have provided $6 million in new special education funding each year for Rochester, I believe is that correct, beginning in fiscal year, year 2023. So I think it's still not too late to contact our legislators, to encourage them to come back into special session. I'm not sure exactly where that is right now. Maybe they are already back in special session since I prepared this very brief update.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chair Marvin.
Oh.
I should have a bell.
Scares me. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Over the past few weeks, I, along with many of our fellow school board members, were able to attend a number of end-of-the-year events, various programs, various buildings. Aside from the traditional graduations, there was graduations at the Launching Emerging Adults Program, and at ALC, and the end-of-the-year events at Incubator EDU, and C-Tech and P-Tech. and at ALC, and the end-of-the-year events at Incubator EDU and C-Tech and P-Tech. And all I want to say is keep the invitations coming when the school year starts up. We don't just want to come to things at the end of the year. We would love to come see the things that happened during the year. One of the examples of an event that happened at the end of the year, but I know had been happening earlier, is the Riverside Grades, Bikes, and Books Event, which was a wonderful family engagement event. So I just want to thank everybody who did invite us and for everybody who did put on those events. It was great to see the culmination of this school year, but we're looking forward to seeing it incrementally as the school year happens next fall.
Absolutely. And that's one of the gifts of being a school board member is that you do get invited to come to schools and to events and to celebrate with our students who have accomplished so much and in so many diverse ways. The programs that we have at this district that are designed specifically for students who are differently gifted never ceases to amaze me. One other thing I'll mention too, that our community engagement, Community and Family Engagement Committee, which does a huge amount of work all the time, but they have been very concerned about parents getting the resources they need to be able to figure out how to talk with their children when children are feeling stressed or depressed or especially recently afraid. And it's not, I think, natural for parents to know exactly how much to say, what questions to ask, how to approach a child who may be processing really difficult events. And they have a list of really good resources for parents and guardians. So, and Superintendent as well has sent out information for parents. It's a tough time for kids, and we as parents, I think, need all the help we can get too. So I appreciate that. To our consent agenda, any item to be removed for separate consideration?
Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Nathan. The consent agenda is approved. 7.01 School Board Resource Officer, this is SRO, Implementation Group Update. Dr. Pecow.
Directors, I am pleased to ask our friend Tawanda Burks to come up and join us. As the board is well aware, we have a very important collaborative relationship with Rochester Police Department, which is embodied in the presence of school resource officers in our schools. And the board has directed and we have launched a multi-pronged effort to make sure that those officers are part of the efforts, actually much of which we've been talking about tonight, to enhance both safety and student belonging. And so we previously have had a memorandum of understanding with Rochester Police Department. At the June 21 board meeting, the board will consider a revision of the contract. And in the meantime, we have wanted to reach across the very different cultures and processes of education and policing and also community members to really be sure that we're effectively making the most of this collaborative relationship and frankly, addressing some sometimes challenging issues. And so Tawanda has been serving as our facilitator for bringing us together for monthly meetings to check progress. And we know that the board requested periodic updates on that work. And so this is an opportunity for us to hear how it's going. And thank you for your leadership and your work that you're providing for us in this effort.
Yes, thank you. I feel like pretty much summed everything up with communication. I heard that keyword several times today. So that's pretty much what I'm going to conclude with today. Do I? Okay, there we go. As was mentioned here, I am leading the charge here to kind of bring that group together to kind of talk about what does it look like going forward to implement this MOU. The last time I did come to this group, I provided high-level updates about where we were at that point. And at that point, we're just very new in the process. I think we had a couple of meetings at that time, just pretty much introducing each other, what the current state was, what do we want the legacy program to look like essentially. At that time, we also talked about what does the work look like for administrators and equity specialists. And at that time, again, I can summarize that with a lot of communication is needed and clarity around roles and responsibilities. So since we've met last, we pretty much got through the entire MOU as the various different phases that needed to be implemented. With Student Services Staff, that includes, you know, the various positions that are in place and how do the SROs work with that group as well as the equity specialists. It concluded, again, I would not stress communication enough. It concluded with having monthly meetings to create better lines of communication across the board, clear understanding of those roles and responsibilities as well, especially around the equity specialists and the SROs. The monthly student meetings as well. We actually, that's the only topic that we have left to discuss at our next meeting, which is scheduled for the 16th. And the reason why we have to come back to that one is because that's, it's kind of a gray line in that space with having SROs as well as staff have an open forum with the students and things that can be discussed. So we'll follow up on that one. The monthly staff meetings, again, clear understanding of the staff to include a monthly meeting. That needs to be defined as far as what staff needs to be included in those monthly meetings. The SROs are to coordinate monthly meetings with the equity specialists as well going forward for communication purposes. Now we moved on to the last three, which are videos, forums for family, as well as the equity training. For the videos, it was already discussed that it was very limited content currently available on your website that included basic information and drug use, et cetera. The SROs did say that they can do more in this space, including relevant current trends that are taking place, TikTok challenges, vaping, you know, safety, witch driving, and things like that. Forums for families include the equity specialists currently engaging with families and providing support, which was mentioned when students have these topics or families, where can they go to get more information? So hopefully these forums can provide resources to the parents as well. Equity specialists and SROs to work together and do more outreach within the community as well. One way to, to, for the forums to exist, one of the ideas was to create a survey for the parents as well to understand what topics they should bring forward and have discussions on. And the way to do this, the group thought that it should be a tiered approach as well. Lastly was the equity training. It sounds like the SROs are going through equity training throughout the summertime. So this is where they are continuing their education with microaggression terminology, special education, youth, and wanted to be very youth-specific as well and have training around lived experiences. So great conversations that are taking place. And again, we kind of concluded, aside from coming back for the student monthly meetings to have that conversation, what does it look like for a communication plan across the board between the staff, SROs, and equity specialists, which is essential to moving a lot of this work forward as well as understanding the roles and responsibilities of each role that exists. Any questions for me?
I had one about the videos. Maybe I missed the transition. Can you just, that top bullet point?
Sure.
Kind of where were you anchoring yourself?
Yep, yep. So for the videos, the purpose of that one is to have content available for students and families that's educational for staff to use as well. And currently, the only thing that's available is very limited information that's on the website, I believe. So the goal here is to create more content to be available to students and parents.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Barlow.
Tawanda, would it be possible earlier, a member of the community expressed concerns about what the district perhaps could do in terms of informing, equipping parents in terms of helping their children navigate summers and summer and things like that? Is it possible to, at the next meeting, float that idea of potentially developing a video that addresses how to stay safe, if you will, how to avoid certain potential activity or, you know?
Yeah, that's a good idea to bring back. And we actually had some conversation around that. You know, some of the things to stay safe as far as, you know, drinking and driving, seatbelt, you know, things like that. But I can certainly bring that topic back as well.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Can you talk a little bit more about the topic of the clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities, what the plan is moving forward for that?
Yeah, so it sounds like there's no clarity around the SRO roles and responsibility. So for example, you know, some staff do consider that to be, even though they are law enforcement, you know, in some cases they're being used as if they're, you know, there to be the police. In some cases, they're not. So I don't think there's clear, clear understanding of what the SRO role is to the staff that's involved.
And how do you intend to work with this group to?
Yeah, so there's a lot of relationship building, a lot of relationship buildings that needs to exist. And through the various monthly meetings that they have to do is where they're continuing to build those relationships. So it sounds like there's a lot of meetings that's currently not in place that they have to put in place going forward to build those relationships.
I also feel like some of that, to be honest, is just our fault because we weren't clear about what we wanted them to do. And so if it's not clear in the contract, they don't know what they're doing. Other people think that they're doing stuff. I, to me, this is absolutely a need for this. It's like, what are the expectations and how can we appropriately interact with SROs when they're around to make sure that sort of their roles and responsibilities are protected and respected? And also, when there needs to be a redirection of like, no, I don't do that as an SRO, where does that staff need to go and what education do we provide them so that they understand who they need to go to?
Yeah, I would say that both the school as well as the SRO side of things, both agree that there's a lot of more work that each side should do and could do, which is good. And again, we continue to have those conversations to put things in place going forward.
I have kind of a follow-up on that. Do you have thoughts on how to make sure that that's consistent across the district?
Yes, we actually talked about that too because it sounds like there's no standardization across the schools, right? Each school does something different. So we have talked about how do we ensure that some of this, the work that's being done, how can it be standardized? So we hadn't gotten that part yet.
Do you feel like that that is within the scope of your work?
I don't feel like it is within the scope of the work, but it's certainly worth having a conversation around to bring recommendations back for the previous phases, the phases to come.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you so much for the work you're doing and for this really good presentation.
Thank you so much. I told Tawanda, when she gets this one completely fixed, we have a few other areas where we could use better. We could use better definitions of roles and responsibilities. That has nothing to do with SROs. So thank you so much.
7.02 Annual Debt Management Update. This is an information item. Dr. Pecow.
Directors, I am pleased to ask John Carlson, our Executive Director of Finance and Technology and everything else, to come and give us an update on our debt management.
Perfect. Well, thank you, Chair Marvin, Superintendent Pecow, board members. This is my first annual update on debt management. Director or Vice Chair Nathan was happy to point out to me that we owe an annual report on this. So I am learning on how to do a debt management report. So if there's anything you'd like to see improved for next year, I'd be happy to do that. So I thought a little bit of background would be helpful. Why do we use debt? First, we use it to finance our building projects. So any project that we think is in the last 20 years or longer, we may consider using debt. Doesn't mean we're going to always use debt, but we may consider it. Generally, we're planning for our buildings to be in use for 50 or more years. Like, for example, this building is, I think, 105 or 110 years old at this point. To finance technology projects that are going to be used for more than three years. And generally, we're using our technology for six to eight years. So it fits right within that. So how do we pay for our debts? For all of our current debts, there is a property tax levy dedicated to the repayment of the debt. So that's authorized on the annual levy. When we get there, you approve that each fall. When the debt goes away, so does the authorized property tax levy. So in other words, if there's not debt to replace it, then property taxes generally go down. Voters can vote to approve issuance of debt, and the school board also has authority in law to issue certain debts. And so two of our 14 current debts are voter-approved. And those are the ones that built Gibbs Elementary School and then the more recent one that's building Dakota Longfellow Bishop Century Pool and then a handful of other projects. So right now, we have approximately $347,630,000 in debt. It's broken between general obligation bonds and certificates of participation. Our historical debt balance has been increasing over the last few years, although as I pointed out in board docs, this has been strategic. This is not because we didn't know what we were doing. We did ask the voters to approve issuing debt to build the new schools that I just mentioned, as well as we've been asking the board to approve a couple debt issuances to do some major remodeling, John Marshall being one of the most recent examples. As far as our credit rating, Standard and Poor's recently did a credit rating review on us on April 15. They rated us double A. That is the third highest rating you can get. There are two notches higher, AA+ and AAA, but there are 19 notches lower that we could go. And so I'm glad that we're near the top and not near the bottom of that list. And I thought I would just end with, what does S&amp;P think about the level of debt? So this is in their words. I've quoted from their report, a couple of the sentences I thought were applicable here. But overall, they believe we have low to moderate debt burden. As noted, 60% of the debt that we have on the books will be paid off within 10 years. And that they also consider it moderate on a per capita basis. So based on the number of people that live within our district, it's moderate. And then low based on the percent of market value. So when you look at the tax base as a whole, it's a low value in their estimation. In board docs, I gave you a listing of all those 14 debts, the amounts, and then the dates they're expected to be paid off. And so with that, I would conclude my annual debt management update.
Questions, compliments?
Compliments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. 8.01 Strategic Action Plan Review. This is a briefing item.
Dr. Marvin and Directors, we need to bring up a PowerPoint here that is really the whole purpose of the presentation. So let's see if we can do that. I'll just stand here.
We don't have it.
There we go. Let's, is that okay if I stand here? Everybody can see it? So as Directors of the Board are very well aware, we have been, over the course of the past really eight months, engaged in the development of a strategic action plan to guide the work of Rochester Public Schools for the next three years. Board members had an opportunity to hear from some of the folks that helped develop that plan on working groups that I'll briefly describe in a moment. At a recent study session, at the board's next study session, you'll have a further opportunity, in particular to dialogue with each other about the plan. And then we are hoping that this board will take a vote on June 21 at your meeting to approve a final version of this plan to guide our work. And so the goal of this presentation, which is intended to be relatively brief because it's a complex plan that we have to get continually better and better at describing to people, is to unveil this plan for both the board and the community and other folks who are watching. The plan itself, which is on our website on board docs, is quite long and quite complex. But the format that the plan is in as it came out of the working groups is not necessarily the format that it will be in as we move toward implementation. Some of the initiatives will be appropriately combined into similar strategies. Others of them may be phased. They don't begin until year three, whereas others will begin immediately in year one. And so as I get ready to give a very brief overview of this plan and where we stand, I do want to assure both the board and the community that while it is ambitious, I believe it's achievable. And I will tell you that I and our Director of Strategic Planning and Continuous Improvement Denise Moody and our colleagues from Wilder Research who helped develop this and many of the participants of the working group looked for stuff to cut. In the end, we concluded that everything that's here is absolutely critical. And I do believe that with implementation... that's here is absolutely critical. And I do believe that with implementation that is as careful as the development of the plan has been, it's achievable as well. So, with that, these are the folks who've been on the working groups. They, uh, you had representatives, uh, from many of those working groups at, uh, our recent study session. And we owe an incredible debt of gratitude to these folks. We know that in addition to these working groups, we also extensively surveyed our community. We looked at published research on effective, uh, school districts around the country and even, in fact, around the world. Um, but the heart of the process were these working groups, one of which focused on developing overall coherence of the strategy as a whole, second of which focused on the economic engine. How do we resource our work so that we can provide all students with an extraordinary education? The third focused on family and community engagements, uh, engagement. The fourth on improvement systems, how we get better at getting better. The fifth, an organizational culture. What does it feel like to be a student, a staff member, a family member in Rochester Public Schools? And then, the sixth and final focused on our outcomes and our measures. What are, what are we seeking to achieve and how are we actually going to get there? Um, on the slide and then also actually on the wall, we have a document that was created at a final meeting of the working groups that I was actually not able to attend, but that I have really enjoyed looking at. And this was something that, uh, one of these graphic artists who listens while conversations are happening and activities are being implemented and captures the language and the energy of the, um, conversation put together. And you can see here, it really is envisioning this as a journey, a journey that is a process. It's not linear, it's fluid, but it's headed somewhere. And at the cornerstone of it there, you see, planning for purpose. And if I have to boil what I think this plan is all about down into a word, it is purpose. First of all, helping every one of our students recognize and realize their purpose, their purpose as learners, their purpose as people, but also being purposeful as educators, being proactive rather than reactive. With the complexity of everything that we're dealing with these days, it sometimes seems all we can do to be reactive, but that's not how we actually, um, get ahead of the issues that we are all facing and, uh, help realize the aspirations, the high aspirations that our students have for their lives. So, that's an interesting graphic and a lot of great phrases that, um, jump out from that final meeting of our working groups. So, what's in the plan? I think one way to conceptualize this plan, quite different from the matrices that are in the report that, uh, the board has received and that, uh, the community has access to, is to think of it as a series of concentric circles, beginning with the student at the center. Now, that may make your eyes glaze over there very briefly, but let me actually break it down into those concentric circles and just give you a general sense of the critical initiatives that have come out of our strategic planning process. Again, some of these actually may be combined as we move into implementation. Um, but for now, it's important to have them all represented here so that the stakeholders who helped develop this plan are confident that the work that they helped us put together is, uh, being presented to the board at your next meeting for a vote. So, the first ring around our students is the family and that family engagement. And the priorities that came in that sector out of the planning process are, first of all, a, a new strategy to empower our families, especially those families who may not have had successful experiences of their own previously in schools. And so, a parent empowerment program and initiative was something that strongly came out of that process. The second was really reinventing the process through which we communicate with families to become more of an ongoing two-way dialogue, really the antithesis of sort of the, the old put a note in the backpack and hope that somebody reads it. And then, finally, helping families effectively navigate many of the complex issues like selecting schools, like getting services for their kids that are often very difficult. For, they're very difficult for anybody, um, in any organization, but really making sure that we're providing those navigation supports, especially across transitions, like from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. So, that's our first ring. Um, and it really is about, uh, effectively engaging our families to support their learners. The next ring is in that classroom level. And there, our priorities, first of all, focus on deeper learning, which was a phrase that, uh, we found pretty late in the planning process. There's actually a growing body of research on deeper learning. In a nutshell, the core idea is it's less is more, and you go deep with understanding of the core concepts, um, core, core knowledge and skills, and critically, the ability to apply those concepts and skills to real-world situations. It's the antithesis of regurgitating, regurgitating something for the test. It's truly understanding the concept and being able to apply it to solve problems, to innovate, just like what we saw in Thomas and Salma's presentations earlier today. The next big focus of the classroom is, uh, being systematic with our approach to social-emotional learning, what we used to call those soft skills, things like motivation, empathy, relationship building. Um, but what came out of our planning process is really to integrate that into academic instruction, such that it's not just now we're going to stop and work on those social-emotional skills, but that while we're learning math or while we're playing in the orchestra or while we're doing extracurriculars, we're building those, uh, those critical skills, which we know are very essential to student success in the workplace and in higher education. The next priority at the classroom level was elevating, as, as we were talking about earlier, the role of both student and staff voice and being sure that students in particular, at the classroom level, have an opportunity to, um, uh, share their ideas and share their experiences with their teachers, with our administrators and others. And then, finally, really strengthening relationships, in particular developmental relationships, relationships with kids that are not just caring, but also challenging and propulsive in nature. So, those are the priorities that came out at our classroom level. At the school level, and in many respects, the school is the core unit of improvement behind this plan, even though the classroom, the district, the family have critical roles to play. Uh, a huge idea that came out of our planning process is that we really need to lean in what, lean into what is often called multi-tiered systems of support, to really have an understanding of what is at that tier one, both of our academic instruction, of, of also our social-emotional learning, behavioral work, that all students are receiving. And then, when stu-, for students who need additional support and additional resources, maybe additional acceleration, there's a tier two and a tier three, where we're really differentiating. The, the, the core thing to get away from in this space is saying to a single classroom teacher, you have to meet all of these diverse needs within your classroom with no interventions and no other additional opportunities for serving those kids. We're going to be, uh, conducting, uh, an audit and a partnership with the University of Minnesota, starting in August, of our multi-tiered systems of supports in our schools. And this is going to be work that is going to be both structural, creating new interventions for kids who need, uh, support or acceleration, um, but also instructional, helping teachers and others, um, to, uh, differentiate within those structures. But again, it's, it's moving away from saying to a single classroom teacher, all of these needs are here and you need to meet them all within, uh, your classroom on your own. Uh, next critical priority at the school level will be mental health. That the, uh, mental health of, in particular, our students, we know, has been gravely affected by, of course, the pandemic, but also other factors in recent years. And, uh, in this case, we know that enhancing the services we provide within the district to mental health is part of the equation, but it also will involve, uh, working even more closely with community providers so that we can actually significantly scale up the, um, number of students that we're reaching with mental health supports and the intensity of the supports that we're providing. And beginning to move into some type of universal screening system where we actually can be proactively monitoring kids and giving them an opportunity to flag their need for additional resources and support. The, uh, next category that came out of our planning process was also having continuous improvement and in particular, reinventing our school improvement plans so that they are not kind of annual compliance box-checking exercises, but that they really meaningfully focus our schools on, um, goals and, and experimentation and innovation to achieve those goals with aligned district supports. The school's the unit of improvement, but the resources, whether it's professional development or curriculum or expertise and other areas, are coming from the system level to benefit that, um, that school, uh, strategy for improvement. Another initiative at the school level that came strongly out of our working groups was staff well-being. The idea that if our staff are not themselves, uh, feeling like they belong, feeling supported, feeling, um, their full selves in our schools, we can't be all that we want to be for our students. In the Belonging and Behavior Summit that many of us had today with all teams from all of our secondary schools, this came up again and again. And it was very difficult to be attentive to staff well-being in the midst of all the other things that have been happening this year. I think we can be proud of the ways that we did that, including our planning and well-being days. We want to be much more systematic about that in, in taking care of our, our, our staff who make the critical difference for our students. And then, the final strategy at that school level is, um, moving from, uh, kind of identifying the problem to making progress on the problem as it regards to discipline disparities between student groups, um, in our system. That ties, of course, to all of the work we want to do around belonging and culture, but it also ties to our disciplinary processes themselves. And really making sure, especially that we're reflective of best practice that's happening in schools around the country that are meaningfully making progress on that, because we haven't made progress in recent years despite a lot of, uh, of efforts to do so. And then, our final ring, uh, in the strategic plan is the district level. Well, not our final ring, we have actual, two more. So, at the district level, these are the things that we want to be systemic across schools, not necessarily implemented in exactly the same way in each school, but that we do have as coherent initiatives across our district. The first one is a major new emphasis on post-secondary and career planning. We have unbelievable targeted programs in Rochester, like PTEC and CTEC. Um, but we need to lean in to helping all of our students, especially starting, uh, in middle school, begin planning for life after high school. And that's, that's going to have benefits, of course, over time for them as they move out into that world beyond high school. But we also know from a lot of research that it has benefits for how motivated they are to work hard in their classes every day. Unless a student sees a purpose for learning in their life, their investment in what their teacher is asking them to do is going to be very transactional and, and for some kids, pretty light. But if they see in their, uh, course content in their classes, a path to their own goals for their future, we know that can have tremendous benefits for, uh, those students' motivation and, uh, the self-regulation and initiative that they take. Second strategy at the district level is increasing the number and the diversity of our students to earn some type of post-secondary credit, like in a college-in-the-schools class, a PSEO class, um, an advanced placement class, something that actually will have both educational benefits for them, because we know that that experience can help raise aspirations and, uh, increase motivation, but also economic benefits for them, as many of our students can come out of high school with an associate's degree at the same time as their high school diploma. 20 years ago, that seemed like a crazy, impossible idea, and increasingly, it's becoming, um, a reality, uh, for many students. And of course, our PTEC students are well on their way to that path, but the goal in the plan is to have a much more systematic approach. Um, also, at the district level, uh, really launching a systemic effort to, uh, recruit, retain and support staff of color, um, and who are indigenous is another critical priority in the plan. That's going to require rethinking some longstanding practices that we've used around, uh, recruitment and retention, but that we're not necessarily focused on particular, uh, staff members, staff members from groups that are underrepresented in our district, uh, when compared to the student demographics that we have. Another priority at the district level was a, a need to continue the work that we've begun to do this year, to be very creative in filling our shortage positions. Why do we have certain positions that, uh, we are continually struggling to fill? And how do we actually get ahead of that so that we can, uh, have those services provided to kids in the way that they're built into the budget that, that we ask you to approve every year? We have, uh, as board members are well aware, uh, added a research director over the course of the past year, and the plan calls for really building out the capacity of our schools to use data and research to make decisions about their, um, uh, their strategies for improvement. In the consent agenda tonight, you approved a new software platform that I am very excited is going to allow individual educators, school communities and the district to both drill down and aggregate data in a much more actionable way than we currently can, which in many schools, if you ever want your head to explode, ask to see the spreadsheet that the ORCA team at John Marshall High School uses. It is everything on an incredible spreadsheet, and it's amazing what they've built, and they know how to read it, but it is not user-friendly for people trying to provide needs, uh, services to kids in a, in a rapid, uh, way. We also came out of the planning process with a strong, uh, emphasis on, uh, induction for our new employees, in particular, um, what we've historically called paraprofessionals and what, uh, I think we're going to be increasingly in Rochester, uh, calling education service professionals, um, that we bring those very critical members of our team on. And in many cases, we heard, don't do much to both help them understand how the districts work, how their role, how their role works. It's not just limited to, uh, paraprofessionals, but we got that message very loud and clear that that's an urgent need. But new employees, uh, in general, uh, is really, really critical. I will just say one thing that also came out of our process. As you launch those efforts to, you know, uh, in, induct someone who's new to our district, we need to be careful, uh, we need to guard against recruiting for diversity, but then onboarding for similarity. That we recruit people who are going to bring, uh, uh, life experiences and, uh, knowledge and, uh, other things to our district that we need. And then, their induction process is, now here's the way we do everything in Rochester. Um, we need to be very mindful of the fact that the inclusion starts with induction, it doesn't end with recruitment. Um, and then, leadership development. We know that, uh, starting with our principals critically, but also our assistant principals, teacher leaders who actually want to be and are, in many cases, leading in our schools, but who have no desire to leave the classroom, but whose ability, uh, to lead improvement efforts and other things in our schools can and should be continually enhanced, also leaders at the central office level. So, we're adding a Director of Leadership Development position. This is work that we know in the corporate world, in the military, in many other sectors, they consider essential, developing their leaders continually. It's not optional, it's required, they spend money on it. That's very new in education. And so, uh, to have leadership development, uh, in a systematic way is key. And then, finally, at the district level, thinking, uh, very hard and creatively about how we allocate dollars from the district to the school level. And making sure that the way we are allocating those, those resources is most effectively meeting the needs of kids in each schools. Our schools are very different from each other. And when we staff them using a common ratio across the district that has benefits in terms of transparency and fairness, we need to ask if it actually is most effectively meeting the needs of kids in each school. We also need to take a look, as part of that effort, at some really important categorical funds and the way we're allocating them in our district. In particular, compensatory education aid from the state of Minnesota and Title I funding from the federal government, to be sure that the ways that we are using those really important resources are integrated with the school improvement efforts that are happening in schools as a whole. We know from pretty strong body of research on school finance, that treating funding streams as separate, isolated, uh, sources of funding for particular programs is very unlikely to result in improvements in student outcomes across a whole school, because it's a very piecemeal approach. And so, thinking about how Title I funding balances general education funding, balances, integrates with special education funding, integrates with English language learner funding, um, and the compensatory education aid is really what's at the heart of that district-level agenda. And then, our final, uh, ring of the process is at the community level. Interestingly, again, some of these ideas came totally organically out of our planning process. They were, were definitely not on my radar screen when, uh, we began this process. Reducing the primary barrier to participation in many of our really wonderful early childhood programs, which is transportation, came out of that. So, that priority is actually, interestingly, not about strengthening the quality of those programs or, or making major shifts in their content. It is, uh, it's not even necessarily in, depending on the program, about the funding stream, because we have funding streams to provide the services. In Rochester, for young fa-, families with very young children, one of our biggest barriers is transportation so that those, those parents and caregivers can get the kids to our program. So, that's priority one on that community piece. Um, we have a, uh, an initiative that also came out of our process that certainly would be something the board would very much own, because the board owns policy, and that is reviewing all of our policies for their, um, alignment with equity, meaning that all of our students, our staff, our families are, have what they need to thrive. And so, that would be presumably something that the Policy Committee of the School Board would, uh, take ownership of and integrate in. I think, uh, having been with that committee for its monthly meetings for most of the last year, it's something that has always been implicit, and the strategic plan calls for making it quite explicit and potentially even having a rubric through which policy would be analyzed, uh, for its alignment, uh, with equity, each policy, that is to say. Um, uh, we had, um, uh, out of the Outcomes and Measures Working Group, a very strong desire to have a regular reporting to the community, uh, especially around our, uh, academic and other outcomes, that is totally transparent, very accessible, easily understood. If you want to, right now, get data on how one of our schools or our district as a whole is doing, um, we don't make it easy for our stakeholders to do that. You kind of have to know about the Minnesota State Report Card, and then that's really only one slice of what it takes for students to succeed. And so, having a- And so having a strong and well-resourced strategy of sharing our outcomes and also data on things like what we've been talking about tonight, school culture and belonging with our community, and having an advisory committee that has community stakeholders on it that is advising on those data that we make available. And so really holding ourselves accountable to be transparent with our outcomes. Next priority at the district level is really leaning into systematic new levels of community partnership to be sure that those engagements with community organizations, whether it's nonprofits, businesses, many others, social service agencies, governments, are truly reciprocal, they're two-way, and they're efficient, and that they're moving the needle for our students. And then finally, and critically, as the board has not yet made a formal decision, but our planning process certainly calls on our district to develop a compelling plan for an additional operating referendum that the citizens of Rochester could consider and support, which really could light a fire under this plan. The earliest that would happen, of course, would be the fall of '23, but I think in some ways, one could think of that initiative as the opportunity that really would propel this plan forward in a really extraordinary way, but even in advance of that, we do have the resources to get moving on this strategy. So that is what it all looks like when we put that graphic together. I'm confident that we will continue to get better and better at making this clearer and clearer. I think for me, it's getting there, we're iterating in that direction, but we don't want to let anybody think that in trying to make the components of this plan clearer, as I said earlier, that we're dropping any of the things that came out of this process. Though, when you vote on this plan in a couple of weeks, you will have the opportunity to add or subtract or make other adjustments. And then it's my hope that over the summer, we will move very intensively into planning for collaborative implementation structures, just as the development of this plan was highly collaborative, the implementation of it will continue to be, we'll have cross-cutting teams that will be involved in setting measurable outcomes, timelines, milestones, responsible, back to the point Tuwanda was making earlier, real clarity on roles and responsibilities. The final point I would make is that over the summer, and especially in the fall, we also will launch a very extensive process of reaching out to both internal and external stakeholders to describe the content of this plan, which I think by then, as I've said a number of times, I'm confident will be even clearer and simpler and easier to understand as we keep getting sharper about what's at the core. So implementation and community and stakeholder outreach will be critical next step priorities after you consider the plan on the 21st. And with that, I will rejoin you up there and thank Denise Moody in particular for all of the leaderships she's provided in our work on the strategic planning process, including helping me, along with folks in our amazing communications team, at that first cut at a better visual way to represent this plan. I think that I kept referring to it as the donut rings. I think it's a step forward, but if any of you are more talented graphically than I am and you have a brainstorm of other ways we can distill the complexity of this plan into images or metaphors that are more easily understandable, that's really an urgent priority for us right now, because the success we have in implementing this plan will be directly related to the degree to which people can understand it. So with that, I'll open it up to discussion and questions.
Questions, comments? You know, we've all had a copy of the entire plan in book form, and it has quite a bit of time to study it, so I think this is a great overview.
I do have one question.
Yeah, Karen?
Thank you for clarifying under the district, the career pathways relates to student career pathways?
Yes.
Because I was thinking that was relating to staff, but it led me to think, is that also then part of the leadership development on the other side of the circle?
Absolutely. Yeah, the pathway, it's a good way to put it, the pathways for staff who do choose and want to be aiming at next steps is another, is a really critical component of that leadership piece for sure. I think it also runs through our, the induction work that's in here as well. But yeah, that point in the circle was referring to post-secondary and career pathways for students.
And I'll just give my feedback, I love the circles, the donuts. The plan itself is very dense, it's nice to have it on one page.
Okay.
And I think it gives us all good ways to talk about it.
Good.
I agree, it's like a very systems-theory-esque, and so I think it's easy, or will be easy for people to see how might they fit into many of those categories for a student, or solidly in one.
I know we're going to be voting on this in a couple of weeks and will be working with this for years to come, so, thank you, Dr. Pecel.
Chair Marvin?
Yep. Oh, yes. Denise, Kathy, yes.
We have been talking about this for a while, and we've had a few board presentations, but for anybody watching this on YouTube or in person, this is the time for the community to provide feedback on what might help the board understand what the community sees and what we've presented, so that before we take a final vote, we're doing it with a mindset of, you know, knowing that our community has a good understanding of what we're voting on and the direction that we're going for the district. So as Chair Marvin said, the whole document is available online, the one-page roadmap's available online, this is available online, and this is the time to give us your feedback.
Good point, thank you, Kathy. And again, thank you, Dr. Pecel. We will move to 8.02, central office reorganization. Dr. Pecel?
Dr. Marvin, Director of the Board, I'll just be very brief here, there is a long memo and a resolution here that provides the board with an opportunity to take some formal action on something that I have talked with board members about in other settings, and that was a structuring of our school district central administration, meaning people who don't work directly in a school or program, to align with the plan that we actually just talked about. And so there's a quite long memo with a lot of detail. I want to say at the outset that changes in organizational structure are never easy, and we have tried to do this with as much precision and care as is possible, but these changes are often hard, and I regret the challenge that it brings to us, but I also think it lays the groundwork for achieving many of those goals that are at the core of the plan and that we all hold dear for our students. So very briefly, at the core of this reorganization are four big ideas. One is having a unified Office of Academics that really brings together our different strands of our support for teaching and learning, notably including our general education supports, our special education services for students with disabilities, our multilanguage learner services, acceleration supports and others, along with our analytic capability, and specifically our office, which is currently one person, of research. That office will be led by a chief academic officer, and that recruitment for that position closed on Friday, and will begin interviews and processes soon. So big idea number one is alignment of our support for the teaching and learning process in schools. The second big idea is also alignment of the support we provide for schools, in particular as it applies to support for leadership, school improvement, planning processes, and crisis response, and that's creation of an Office of School Support that will bring together all of our schools and programs under the leadership of a chief of schools that is our, currently occupied as a new name for the position Jackie Peterson holds. The third big idea is taking our very new and very exciting Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion and adding to it the critical idea of engagement, students' engagement in learning and family engagement, in particular of students and families from historically marginalized communities. So no backtracking on the commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion that certainly is at the heart of our equity policy and predates my coming to Rochester, but adding to that a strong emphasis on how we help students engage in learning and how we engage families. So two issues in the strategic plan, for instance, that clearly will be housed within that effort are those efforts to engage students, to support them on pathways to success in post-secondary education and a career, and then also efforts to empower parents, especially parents who need additional supports in both understanding and navigating our school system. And then the final big idea is broadening the work that Amy Icke and her amazing team have always done in community education to include community education partnerships and also communications. And so this really will be a hub of connecting our district to the community of Rochester and really beyond, such that we become, I hope, a really, really responsive organization where, as we were saying earlier, the arrows of dialogue and the exchange of ideas are headed in two directions. There are, of course, reductions in a process of organizational improvement that often get made cumulatively since I came, the changes in the central administration will have reduced the cost of our district central administration by about $350,000. In the elimination of some positions, it's critical in order to make some new positions possible. And so the new positions that are created through this position or somewhat reorganized would be a Director of Communications, cited that previously a cabinet position that we've eliminated as a cabinet position, Director of School Support, Director of Leadership Development, Director of Post-Secondary Readiness, two important coordinator position focused on community partnerships, and important coordinator position focused on family engagement. We've had folks focused on both of those, and they do blur, but there's a body of research on effective school-community collaboration that is actually quite distinct from research on school-family coordination, so we want to have real clear centers of gravity. Adding what was previously a rotating teacher and special assignment position to have a real educational leader as our coordinator of multilanguage learning, which is, like all these positions, something that is open and posted right now, and a chief academic officer that will be responsible for that unified academic support. The final thing that's in the memo, and I won't go into in detail now, but in doing a series of interviews that I did with all members of the cabinet, leadership teams from all of our schools, representatives of every one of our employee unions or bargaining groups, or just leaders from the groups that aren't represented by a union, in March and April, a series of 15 different themes emerged that really are not about org structure, it is about culture and process and the way we work together. And those 15 items are there, and on Wednesday tomorrow, we're actually going to be working with all 100-plus people in our district-wide leadership to look at those 15 and really agree on which ones are critical, so that we're trying to be attentive not just to these structural issues, but to the processes and the ways that we work together. The, I think the final thing that I would add about this reorganization is that, to some extent, this is never done in an effective organization. You're always, you know, shifting and thinking, but I do want to say this has been a ton of work and a challenging effort, and that I'm confident that this structure is going to help us move in the direction we need to go, and it's one that at least as I have the, as long as I have the privilege in the next several years of, for sure, being here, that we will continually evaluate and improve. And so if some things that are in this structure, and this has already happened in the couple of weeks since I announced this, if we discover that there are some problematic assumptions or some things that were not anticipated in this shift, we will be eager for feedback on that and, I hope, very responsive to correcting things that aren't working. And that's a commitment that I want to make to folks that are involved. So with that, I am glad to take any other questions or comments, but the resolution before you would provide you with an opportunity, should you so choose, to weigh in on this. And I'll stop there.
Okay. Questions, comments? Mr. Browlow?
Not so much question, I think it's important for the public to know that Superintendent Pecel met with each of us individually to go over this, and so it's not like we're being hit with this for the first time, and we're being asked to co-sign, if you will. I do appreciate the early opportunity to understand the rationale and to be given an opportunity to share our concerns, and so I fully support the effort that's before us right now.
This is a briefing item at this time, is there any appetite to move it to action?
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So I noticed that on one of these attachments, it's said to be voted on on the June 21st meeting, is that something you wanted us to hold off on for two weeks, or you're...
No.
Okay.
Do it now?
Okay, I'd like to move this to action.
Well, I'll second it for discussion purposes.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action, any discussion?
I'll go first.
Yeah?
I know the exec committee goes through great pains to prepare the agenda and purposely, I think, identified this as preparation for action, and if there were a urgency for action tonight, I would believe that you guys probably would have presented it in that fashion, so. But I'm just offering an observation, Director Nathan or Chair Marvin, if you could maybe share insight. I know procedurally, we advance things initially in this manner, and so I just wanted to make that as a point of observation.
Ms. Workman?
Yeah, I think you make a really excellent point, and I will apologize for not paying attention to where it was on this agenda thing, so I'm happy to withdraw my move to action at this time.
Oh, let us know.
If somebody else wants to make it, well, I can, yeah, whatever.
Can you do that? Withdraw?
Withdraw, and I withdraw my second, well, Director Jess has a book that Robert threw some order right here, let's ask her.
If it would be less time-consuming just to continue with the way it is...
Let's do this, is there any other discussion about moving this to action? All right, then let's vote about moving it to action. All in favor of moving this to action, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Not moved to action?
Good, thank you.
Good resolution, though, good recommendation, good plan. We will move on to eight point, and we'll vote on this at a subsequent meeting. 8.03, approval of the 2022-2023 school district budget, this is a briefing item, and we will not move this one to action, because we've told the community, just putting it out there, that they will have an opportunity to provide input. Dr. Pecel?
Chair Marvin and Directors, like the discussion of the strategic plan, my sense is this presentation that John is going to give us, in some ways, may seem underwhelming because it's so familiar, and I think that's a good thing. It means that we are engaging this board in critical processes early enough and often enough that when we are close to the moment of decision, you are familiar with these plans. And so with that, I want to ask John to give you an updated summary of where we are in the presentation of a budget proposal for you to consider, which looks a lot like our previous updates for you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Chair Marvin. I would also reiterate that we have been working on this so long now that we kind of did it out of order, and we got this done early, and then we had to circle back to budget revisions and five-year forecasts, and so I've made some notations where numbers have been updated, but we'll just quickly go through this, that you do need to approve a budget by July 1st, and so we're counting on that two weeks from tonight. Within our revenue assumptions for next school year, I've listed those there, we are basing our budget on 17,642 students. On our expenditure assumptions, we know that we do have a subtle teachers' contract and a principal's contract, that's a big win for us to have those in place so that we know how to budget for those. We are in process of working now through all of our other contracts and work agreements, so we've had to make assumptions for those. We did do some budget reductions as far as contracted services, supplies, capital expenses, site supply budgets, district-wide or central office budgets were all reduced. I'm just going to flip to the bottom here on FTEs, and so I'm going to be giving you another presentation probably in five to 10 minutes, but, and it's going to have slightly different numbers, this is trying to just compare original budget to original budget to original budget. And the next update I give you is just going to show you how we've progressed through this year, but bottom line, we are budgeting 2,653.9 FTE. That's good news, because as we were talking back in April, and we were, excuse me, back in January, and we're forecasting ahead to what the budget might look like with opening Dakota and Overland and other new buildings, we're anticipating up to 2,760 FTE. So through all of our work, through the budget study sessions, through the superintendent's listening sessions... listening sessions, and our recommended budget reductions, we've gotten that down to 2,653.9. As stated, the superintendent's shifts in central administration, which you are going to, it sounds like, approve next week or two weeks from now, those were done after we had already budgeted as well and are announced, and so those are not included in the original budget, so we don't have a savings reflected per se. We're going to get that caught up in the October budget revisions. This is where I've done some crossing off and updating, but basically if this budget is passed and approved in two weeks, because we have better numbers now on where we are going to end this current school year at about a 12.6% unassigned fund balance, approval of this budget would bring us to 11.6% unassigned fund balance next year. And so in our documents we went over a few weeks ago, it was at 9.4. This is an improvement because within the current year, we're expecting an improvement from where we were. And I think that is what I have, again, very short and sweet, but we have talked about this for multiple months at this point.
Questions? Ms. Workman.
Just not really a question, but just a comment. Director Barlow made me think about this a little bit more, and that is, we are not looking at this for the first time. We've had a study session, we've had the materials to review, so just so the public understands that we just don't come in and vote on something willy-nilly.
I would say, just conjecture, a lot of my colleagues around the state are presenting their school district budgets for the very first time, like this week and next week, and we've had ours out for almost a month at this point for you to look at. So again, we're kind of ahead of the curve this year.
All right, then, we'll move to eight point oh four, the five-year general fund forecast. This is an information item. Dr. Pecel.
And as, thank you, Dr. Marvin, as John switches PowerPoints, this is really an extension of the conversation we just had about the budget, but looking out with an updated version of our projections for the next five years.
All right. I'm going to roll right into this. I think this is standard. This language has been in there, but we review the forecast a couple of different times a year. We use it as a roadmap for planning. Again, revenue assumptions, I kind of just went over that, but basically I highlight there in the middle with the arrow that while we have assumed what we have assumed, there is still a possibility, as Superintendent mentioned, to increase our operating referendum by about $1,100 per pupil, should we choose to do that at some point. For salaries and benefits, we've assumed 3.5% increases per year over the next few years. Same with our other contracted services and supplies. Natural gas is running a little bit expensive right now and keeps going up and up, and so we put a 6% inflator on that. This is just historical. This is the same numbers I would have had in our December presentation, but just reiterating that for the last few years, we've actually been running surpluses, so we've been building fund balance for such a time as this, when maybe we need to withdraw a little bit from the fund balance. This is just commentary on trying to explain that because of the ordering of how we did this, some of the numbers got a little bit goofed up, but I want to point out the bottom line with updated numbers now within the forecast based on the budget revisions then we'll be providing to you in five to 10 minutes from now. We're expecting that the long-range forecast for the unassigned fund balance expressed as a percentage would be 12.6% at this year, 11.6% next year, 6.9% if we made no changes for the '23-'24, meaning if we just let everything run that's in the budget right now and make no planned reductions or any adjustments, we would drop the fund balance by about 5% and then after that, we'd be running into the danger. I wanted to highlight, too, that the $23 million projected deficit that we had, as we had prepared the last forecast and discussed that in December and January, that's been reduced as planned to $4.3 million for the coming school year. So there is no longer a $23 million projected deficit. It's 4.3 million, as we just went through the proposed budget that we've been studying. We've followed the superintendent's roadmap, using federal COVID funding, reducing our expenditures, and using some of our surplus, the 4.3 million. So I think it would just be noted that we can talk about a $4 million deficit now at this point. It's not 23 million.
Would it be accurate, just to, you know, not to split hairs or anything, would it be accurate to terminologize that as a 4.3 million intentional spend down?
That would be an even better way of saying it, that we know what we are doing. We planned to take 4.3 million as part of a larger discussion we had back in January and February. So that's a perfect way of saying it, that we're doing a planned withdrawal from our fund balance. We're using accumulated surpluses from past years to help us through next year.
So the terminology of deficit is a matter of perspective.
Correct.
Our auditors would say it's absolutely...
Correct. If we spent $4.3 million more than the revenue, it would be technically a deficit, but we know where the money's coming from.
And it was intentional.
It was intentional. This is exactly the roadmap that we've been talking about.
Thank you.
So where do we go from here? Well, we are still waiting to hear from, as Director Workman said, from the governor and legislature, hopeful that maybe they would call a special session and pass a bill that was proposed to increase special education funding by 6 million per year. In absence of that, if we don't have any new funding for the '23-'24 school year, we are looking at about a $7 million budget rejection, so about the same as what we did this year. And then, as Superintendent noted, we have, we are assuming that there will probably be a referendum put before the public in November of 2023, but put in very, very small text there that only the school board has the actual authority to call that. So me as a staff member and Superintendent talking about that, you need to engage in that discussion sometime in 2023 or at a future point to actually call an election. There's a lot more details within Board Docs, obviously.
Ms. Anderson.
So the assumption of the 3.5% increases in contracted services and supplies, it doesn't, I am not an expert, but that doesn't seem necessarily realistic compared to what we're hearing about for an annual inflation rate for, you know, CPI and that type of thing.
Right.
So the question is, number one, is there a reason you chose 3.5? And number two, what's the contingency for if it turns out to be a lot?
Needing to be higher than that? Yeah.
I think it could be very much higher.
Yeah, so if it needed to go higher than that, that means that the amount of budget reductions would probably have to be more than the $7 million that we're tentatively or actually planning for next school year.
And how often are you examining? I mean, we do the budget to actual, but in terms of a projection?
Yeah, so we took that 3.5%. That would be, another way of saying that, would be around 7% on a two-year contract that we're settling, and we took that kind of from the teachers' contract that we recently settled and said that might be the setting of the tone for other groups. And so at least for the purposes of putting something on paper and trying to make a forecast, I thought that that was a reasonable... That doesn't mean that that's what the board's going to settle, all the other contracts that, but it's an assumption that, as management, we're making.
I was looking specifically at contracted services and supplies.
Sure. Yep.
I know you said 6% for natural gas, which even seems a little optimistic, but...
Yeah, so again, if those go up faster, and if we're finding that we can't buy the things that we need to buy for our students or provide the services that we need to for our services at the assumed amounts, then we're going to have to increase the budgets, and, which also means then we probably have to make a reduction somewhere else in the system.
But that would be mid-year.
That could be mid-year.
And we haven't had to do that in recent memory.
Correct. Correct. Even this year, as numbers have been inflating a little bit, we haven't had to come to you and ask for more money yet. We've had enough cushion within our budget as it was, and that's why we also felt comfortable actually reducing our budgets by about 5%, because there was a little bit extra in there that we were noticing year over year, that we weren't fully expending what we had.
But when you watch the news and they say this is an unprecedented level of inflation in recent years, we don't have mechanisms in place in our budgeting process to do a mid-year correction.
Well, at least on the expenditure side, we could certainly come to you. We bring budget adjustments to you, which is what I'm going to be bringing in a few minutes, and so we could ask for more, but it has a trickle-down effect. It means that something else might need to be reduced or further cuts in the future to something, so...
I just wanted to know that it was on our radar as a potential new mechanism.
For sure.
Okay. Ms. Nathan.
Mr. Carlson, I know we've talked a little bit about a referendum tonight, but just to make clear, were we to go out for a referendum in 2023, none of that revenue could be used to offset the $7 million in budget reductions we're anticipating for the 2023-24 school year, correct?
That's right. That revenue would be first available for our use in the '24-'25 school year, so it would not help mitigate reductions coming for this next school year.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
All right. Thanks.
We'll move on then to eight point oh five and eight point oh six, policy recommendations and procedure recommendations in our policy committee. I'm not sure how you want to handle this.
We figured it out.
You figured it out?
We figured it out.
Good.
So just a reminder to anybody who's still here or listening at home, the policy committee consists of the vice chair and two additional board members, the appropriate cabinet members necessary to review the policies and the superintendent. So the cabinet members and the board members on the policy committee, we study the policies and the procedures ahead of the monthly meetings that we have and recommend any changes. Sometimes there is a legal change or an MSBA revision. Some of the changes are updates to grammar and punctuation, as you will see tonight. Some policies have no changes, and some may be recommended for retirement. Some policies are required to be reviewed annually, but the majority are on a three-year cycle of review. So with that, I will start with the policies that we reviewed in the policy committee. The first one is Policy 404, Background Checks, and the purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and healthful environment in the school district in order to promote the physical, social, and psychological well-being of its students. The school district will seek a criminal history background check for applicants and on all individuals who are offered the opportunity to provide athletic coaching services or other extracurricular academic coaching services to the school district. So the only change in this policy were updates to grammar and punctuation.
The Policy 516, which is student medication, sets forth the provisions that must be followed when administering non-emergency prescription medication to students at school and school activities. The updates are from MSBA's model policy as well as recommendations from legal counsel. 516.02, which is related, student medication administration while on school-sponsored field trips, also updates to grammar and punctuation. Policy 522, Title IX Sex Non-Discrimination, the school district prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex in all forms, including sexual harassment, and the only updates were to grammar and punctuation.
So Policy 714, on the recommendation of our Executive Director of Finance, was to update the language on the minimum fund balance to no less than 6% to no less than 8%. That will allow us to have a new classification to allow for useful fund balance reporting and for compliance with the reporting guidelines specified in Statement Number 54 of the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards.
And moving on to procedures, also related to student medication, non-emergency prescription medications, so Procedure 516A. The procedures outline the steps that must be taken and the forms that must be filled out before district staff may administer non-emergency prescription medications, and it had been a while since it had been updated, updates to form names and language that coordinates with the changes in policy.
So Procedure 516A.2, we did an update to correct the procedure number, which I will explain in just a minute, to clarify language, grammar, and punctuation. So the purpose of this procedure is to set forth the provisions that must be followed when administering medication to students when participating in school-sponsored overnight field trips. So procedures reviewed that we recommend retirement, the first one is Policy 404A, Background Checks, and this was a series of forms that we have used in the past. Our legal advice was that we don't need to have these forms in the procedure, so that's the reason for retiring Procedure 404A. We are also retiring 516A Form 1 and 516A Form 2, and we are retiring those procedures because they are now actually included in Procedure 516A, or maybe it's Policy 516A. Anyway, they've moved somewhere else. And that does it for our current policy review.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I have one comment. We received an email from an individual who was concerned about our background check policy, and I will forward those concerns to the chair of the policy committee, and it may be something that you want to consider. Then we'll go on to eight point oh seven. This is the second briefing of policies and procedures that have been briefed before. I'm assuming if you had questions on that, you would have forwarded those to the committee. All right, and then eight point oh eight, procedure recommendation. Unlike policies, procedures can be moved to action and can be voted on at any time.
And I just want to clarify for board members that when this was briefed the first time, it included both Policy 606 and Procedure 606C. We have since received information from MSBA that we can anticipate an update to the model policy language for those items, so we will remove those from our consideration until we get those MSBA updates, and we're just focusing on the procedure recommendations specifically related to the reconsideration procedure.
Right.
So we could move this to action this evening, if anyone is inclined, and I will move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535, accept the recommendations the policy committee for these... Am I reading the right one? For these...
Procedure 606A.
Yeah. Pardon?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Procedure 606A, yep.
For these policies and procedures. This is just a procedure.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and the motion passes. Then to our action items, nine point oh one, approval of the agreement for construction manager as advisory services for RPS. Dr. Pecel.
Director of the Board, I'm pleased to ask Scott Sheridan, our Executive Director of Operations, to come up and provide the board with some background.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
I'm here to brief you on the request to approve an agreement for the construction manager agent, or as advisor, services for Rochester Public Schools. As you know, we've been doing $180 million plus in referendum projects. We are planning to do about $11 million in long-term facility maintenance revenue projects this year. In addition, we started the John Marshall Indoor Air Quality Project, which is costing us about $45 million. That's over the next three summers, and we have planned to do indoor air quality projects at a variety of other buildings in the very near future, within the next three years. We have a construction division of one coordinator and two construction assistants who oversee all this work, and it is impossible for them to have their fingers on the pulse of all the daily requirements in order to monitor all these projects. And so when we did the Hoover Edition for the Early Childhood Center back in 2017, at... at that time, we realized that we wanted to utilize or try out the services of a construction manager, agent, or advisor on that project, because it was about an $8 million addition that we put onto Hoover. That was very successful. There was, we hired Knutson Construction, and you approved the hiring of Knutson Construction to be the CMA on that project. And we learned a lot from that particular project, that the value of their services of a CMA, whether it's Knutson or another company, is invaluable. There's a lot of benefits to using them, in addition to the help that they provide us with our small construction services unit. And so we utilized, we asked the board to approve having a CMA for the referendum projects, the vast majority of them at least, the large dollar ones, and you approved Knutson Construction there. Since that time, our relationship has continued and grown, and we have a fantastic working relationship with Knutson Construction. You've seen, there are members that have come and presented to you on the referendum updates. And we did, the board approved a CMA, them to be our CMA through June 30th of this year. What we're asking in this new resolution is that we just continue that indefinitely, our opportunity to utilize them. We make the decisions which project we want them to be a CMA on. They aren't the CMA on all our projects, but we make the decision to ask them to be a CMA for the larger projects, and we're asking you to continue that contract indefinitely. That contract can be terminated just if we choose to do it, or if Knutson chooses to do it as well. And they have set their fees that are in the board docs that will remain in effect during the term of this contract, however long that may be.
Mr. Sheridan, I see that term is beginning July 1st, 2022. Is it in the district's best interest to move on this sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's now an action item. Be it resolved, School Board of Independent School District 535, does hereby approve Knutson Construction as the construction manager advisor for the Rochester Public Schools for the term beginning July 1st, 2022, with an automatic annual renewal unless either party provides written notice to terminate the agreement. That's the resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
Resolution's been moved and seconded. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to ask for clarification?
9.02, approval of budget adjustments as of March 31st, 2022. Dr. Pecal.
Dr. Marvin, board members, pleased to welcome John Carlson back.
Thank you, Chairman Marvin, Superintendent Pecal. This is where we should have been probably maybe a month ago to get this to you, but we got hung up on processing next year's budget ahead of that, so apologize for that. Peyton, can you put it on the screen for me? Peyton, can you put?
Hey.
Perfect, thank you. This is not the right one. Sorry about that. All right, March 31st budget revisions. So the gist of what's going on here is we are lowering the amount of budget expenditures in the general fund due to the persistent high numbers of vacant positions and spending being below target or below budget. So that means we're estimating growth in the unassigned fund balance, which means there will be a potential surplus as '21-'22 comes to a close. And so if you remember, a few minutes ago, I said we've had four years in a row where we're adding to our fund balance. This possibly is going to be the fifth year that we do that. And again, it's from not filling these positions that the superintendent was talking about when he was talking about the strategic plan and not being able to fill some of our critical positions. This slide is more for in case somebody picks up this in the future and just wants to understand what's going on. I comment about numbers that are gray and crossed off are all in context of moving and doing this after we already did the other items. So let's just get to the March 31st budget revisions that were proposed. And again, for anybody who's interested, there's way more supporting detail in board docs than what I share on the screen in about three minutes' time. So the general fund, we're asking that we update the revenue budget higher than what it was from $256.5 million to $257.4 million, and we ask that we reduce the expenditure budget from $265 million to $261 million. This means that the unassigned fund balance then would be about $32.8 million or 12.6%. And I used that number earlier in a different presentation. Our other funds, there's very minimal changes. Again, there's more detail in board docs, but food service, we're increasing the revenue budget slightly, the community ed budget increasing a little bit, building construction a little bit, debt service, we're making a very small change. And then same thing on the expenditures, very minimal changes that are being proposed. In our internal service funds, some of the numbers there, like workers' comp and printing, are not changing at all, and then we're making very small adjustments to the revenues and the expenditures of the other funds. And then these are some of the funds that we put money into for our flexible spending accounts, our health reimbursement arrangements, a custodial account where we run some scholarships and donations through, and then the OPED fund, which we're not recommending any changes to. So all total, the budget was $347.3 million in revenues. This is, again, all funds, not just the general fund, updating it to $349.1, and then we're dropping expenditure budgets from $516.8 million down to $513.8 million. And so all funds, including construction, everything, we'd have about $90 million in fund balance at the end of the year. I had mentioned before on FTE adjustments, this just tracks from where we were at the beginning of the year to the last budget revision to the current budget revision. And I'm just going to drop down to the bottom line there. When the budget was approved last year at this time, it was $2,612.5 FTE. It grew to $2,672 FTE. A lot of that change was due to the online school and making that a more significant school than what had been initially planned. And now it's grown to $2,702 FTE with some more strategic use of some of our federal dollars. Just breaking down the 90 positions that have increased over the year, 50 of them were teacher positions, 17 off-schedule, 14 paras, and then a smattering of other positions. Where they've been, as I mentioned, the RPS online school added 46 FTE from where we started at. Our pre-kindergarten or elementary school buildings, we added 25 positions throughout the year, high school buildings 10, and middle school buildings 6. But on the flip side, even though we've added 90 positions into the budget, we're running at 144 vacant positions right now. And so that's really the gist of what's going on here, is that with all of those positions that we haven't been able to fill, that's why we are projecting that we're going to spend several million dollars, probably less than planned.
Questions?
Chairman Marvin, I always like to point out at these presentations by Mr. Carlson that this is a normal part of our operations, and that first part is approving a budget, which is, I like the terminology he uses, an expenditure authorizing appropriations document, and that Mr. Carlson comes to us four times a year to present these adjustments that reflect the reality of both our revenues and expenditures and any interim decisions that we make to our programming or our services, et cetera. So this is not something that catches anybody by surprise, especially Mr. Carlson. And I just really appreciate the transparency and the to-the-penny documentation of our revenues and expenditures on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, Ms. Nathan. Any other comments or questions? This is not, I mean, this adjustment is not going to change until it gets adjusted next time.
Yes, which probably won't be that far down the road.
Yeah, somebody want to move this to action.
Move to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You need to stop talking so fast?
You know you're not the first person to tell me that. Thanks a lot. Okay, motion passes, and thank you, Mr. Carlson. 9.03, referral to legislative committee, a potential resolution regarding school safety. I don't know that there is a household in the nation who hasn't been touched by the recent horrific shooting in Texas. Nine and 10-year-olds. And the shootings continue. We have heard from this community, and they have said, we have to do something. This community has to do something. The shootings aren't stopping, and whether they're in schools, or synagogues, or sports arenas, or shopping malls, grocery stores, our community is saying, do something. Promise us that you will keep our children safe. This district has taken greater strides in the last few years than in the entire time since I've been here, to do just that, to make our schools as safe as we can. And still, we have reason to be concerned. And Dr. Pecal, I don't know if you want to, we're going to be having a study session in August devoted strictly to school safety, what we're doing, what changes have been made, what we need to think about. But Dr. Pecal, I don't know if you want to speak to the issue at this point.
I'll just take a very brief opportunity to say, and I've had many parents email me in recent days about this. We continually align our work with best practice in the field. We think about this all the time, and we don't talk about our plans with specificity because we don't want to share those plans. And those parents that have emailed me have often responded with, oh, I never thought about that, that you intentionally don't describe your proactive threat assessment processes, your crisis response processes. But people need to know they are out there, and we know we want to do that at a sufficiently high level to, as Dr. Marvin said, reassure the community without giving away our playbook. We also think right now would be an inappropriate time to do that. We are still learning what happened in Uvalde. We are mourning with those families, and any discussion of the work we do today in Rochester would be unavoidably comparative, though unintentionally. So we've intentionally scheduled this overview for August. It's a time when also intentionally, we will not have any students either in summer of discovery or in school. And so we'll look forward to providing the community with a high-level overview of the work that we do in this area. I can tell you, there have been many things I've been impressed about in Rochester Public Schools as a newcomer, and this is at the very top tier. We have a very collaborative relationship in this space with Rochester Police Department, with law enforcement generally, and we also are increasingly connected to mental health providers and other social supports for kids that can be invaluable early warning systems. And a lot of this also comes back to culture. Since I have been in Rochester, we have had students do the right thing and point out peers that they said needed support, and when we intervened, they did need support. And that is everything. That is invaluable if our students will come to us. So we look forward to providing more information in August, even as the board considers whether or not it wants to take some other action beyond our district. We want people to know we are highly engaged with these issues in the district.
And that leads us to the next point. A number of organizations, including the National PTA, have called upon groups everywhere to ask our leaders, our state and our federal leaders, to pass some kind of legislation that will make it more difficult for these kinds of tragedies to continue. And Ms. Nathan, actually, Ms. Nathan wrote up a resolution, and I wonder if you want to take the group through exactly what this resolution involves.
Sure. One of the roles of a school board is to advocate on the local, state, and national level to other lawmakers and policymakers. It's part of the standards of school board leadership, and it's also one of our responsibilities and our external-facing role. We have heard many voices, not just the PTA, but other voices representing parents and students and staff, that action is desired from these other policymakers. And we have a vehicle by which we could express that belief, and that is a resolution that the board could pass. We have a legislative committee for whom that responsibility lies, to develop these kinds of resolutions and bring them to the board for consideration. So in order to make this process clear for all board members and allow all board members to have the opportunity to weigh in as to whether they would like to see this kind of resolution, and then to give that job to the legislative committee, we developed this formal resolution for the board to consider for approval that would direct the legislative committee to identify whether a resolution is appropriate and what the content of that resolution would be.
So at this point, the issue in front of us is not to draft what the message would be, but simply to ask our resolve, to ask our legislative committee to determine what the scope would be, what the message would be, whether this board should go ahead with a resolution, and if so, what the resolution would include. Ms. Amundson.
I have a question for the legislative committee regarding a complicated timeline. I don't know how often you meet and how much of times something like this, but how long until we would see something returned?
I guess my response to that would be that if we're tasked with something like this, we would make the time to accomplish it. I would propose in a timeframe to meet that August study session timeframe would be my input. I don't know if others have other ideas.
I was thinking the same.
About eight weeks.
I mean, yeah, if you give us one week, we'll get it done. If you give us until August, we're going to get it done.
I'm going to give you more than one week. I just would like to be able to answer people's questions as to when we expect to have.
Well, the first thing we have to do is pass the resolution asking the legislative committee to actually do this, and then we can put the pressure on them to get it done fast.
Once we vote, then we move on to the next agenda item, so the time for the question would have been now.
I guess my concern is you want us to decide if it's appropriate to draft a resolution, and if within our committee we decide it is, then you also want us to research and draft the content for that resolution as well. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yep. And that could certainly be with input from, you know, other board members.
Yeah, I think it'll be easier than it sounds, because it's all right there right now.
Right there. Ms. McLaughlin.
And I did have a question when I read the draft resolution here, and I directed it to Dr. Pecal, thinking he wrote this, and now realizing that it's Director Nathan, who I should have directed it to. Director Nathan, when you drafted this and you used the term "local," do you define local as city and county in Rochester, in almost every county, or do you include school board in that as well?
I would include city and county. It's external-facing action.
Okay. So what about the concept of other school board resolutions? Did you contemplate that when you were developing?
Oh, about other school board action, if you wanted to include a resolution regarding our own actions.
Right.
I would think that that would be in the scope of the content.
Okay.
And I think as far as the appropriateness question, I think that does fall into the timing issue that Dr. Amundson brought up. I mean, we don't know how quickly at the federal level, for example, some of the conversations that are happening may move. So by the time we meet again, which our next regular meeting is June 21st, action may have already been taken. So that might guide, I guess, what the content of our resolution might be, depending on what other policymakers are already doing.
Ms. McLaughlin.
And Director Nathan, I have some feedback on that, that one of my concerns on a practical level is talking about recommending actions to the state and federal legislators and policymakers, is that the practical aspect is that we don't have a current congressperson in office. So us advocating to someone who doesn't exist, I don't know how effective that will be unless we're going to broaden that to other people in Congress and senators from our state. And the related concern is that our state representatives now won't, unless they do a special session, which we don't know yet, won't be back in session until January or February. So I just, I worry a little bit about the effectiveness of that advocacy by the legislative committee and by the school board.
Well, and I think that's, you know, it's a valid point. The thing is, our alternative is we can do nothing. And whether we send this to every person, elected official, in every level, which is something we could do, whether they're our people or somebody else's, I think it's just, it's the opportunity to say, do we want to finally speak up? And just say enough.
Well, we do, we do have an election for CD1 on August 9th. So hopefully, we will know within at least a week later who that person is.
Yeah.
And I mean, they're, I mean, obviously, there's not a person, but their staff is still maintaining the office, so.
We don't have someone who can vote on our behalf at this time. That's my concern.
Correct.
Mr. Barlow.
Well, it seems to me like the intent is not who is, or may, or might, but it is for us as a board to lend our concerns, seizing the exigency of the moment, to communicate a resolution. And I would believe our policy committee is well able to do that. Everything else beyond that is, while it's nice to talk about, think about, we're not asking the policy committee to take that on. We're simply asking them, if I understand correctly, draft the resolution for potential distribution to, but we want to see the resolution first.
Yeah. Okay.
We would vote on it.
Yeah, but of course.
Right. This is already an action item, but because it's the first time we have addressed it, I think it needs to be moved to action.
Move to action.
Chair Marvin, I actually had a little bit more comment that I just wanted to share with my board colleagues here, is that reflecting a little bit on the language that we're presented with here, I think is helpful. The proposed resolution talks about, we must all work together to end gun violence. I fully support that, that that's what the National PTA is communicating to us here. It also is within our authority to exercise our ability to pass resolutions. That was the basis for my question to Chair Nathan, is that, or to Vice Chair Nathan, is that if we can draft a separate resolution, that just on the local level, that we can take action. I think that that's what the PTA is potentially looking at, is things we can do on the local level here at the school board, at this table, to work together to end gun violence. And I take that direction from the PTA to heart. I think in the "whereas" statement, there's also the concept here of that there's a need for school districts to express their positions on school safety matters that affect students and staff. Again, I fully agree with that and support that concept. But I think we can even take it further with resolutions about things that our district can adopt as resolutions and actions we can take, not just advocating that others take action, but that we ourselves can take action on behalf of our district and our students and our families.
That's a really good point, Karen. And I think, I think that's part of what we're going to be discussing at our August study session, too.
And I guess the reason I speak to it now is I think it's an important issue. And, you know, the sooner the better. Some of the things that I've come across in my research are that one of the things we could take action on is advocating for safe gun storage. There are studies that say that it increase, it makes a change of 85% reduction in risk of unintentional firearm injuries in children and teens, that 80% of school shooters under the age of 18 get their guns from their own homes. I think back to, I think it was the December meeting where Director Barlow mentioned the Oxford High School in Michigan, that, you know, if action had been taken with that young man, perhaps that would not have happened. In thinking a little bit more about this issue, I heard a speech by Connecticut Senator Chris Murphy talking about, what are we doing? I think what we can do is speak out and take action, even on the local level. There's been an increase in the number of guns in the United States, and specifically in Rochester, in the purchases during the pandemic. I think at the local level, we can look at what we can and cannot do ourselves. There's things at the state and national level that can be done. But again, we can't necessarily control those things. I'm looking at what we can do. And I'm sensing a change that there are even now, the most recent articles that I'm reading talk about even gun owners supporting some of these changes. But I want to focus on what the school board is doing, that students and, if we can do something here locally, perhaps, you know, by our August meeting or at our August meeting, to present a resolution so that students and families can have education about safe gun storage. We are in the business of education, and I feel like this is a gap in perhaps what we're providing to the students at this point. And I look at it in the terms of student safety, because it's not just about student shootings, but also suicides, that 90% of suicides by gun are successful. If we can reduce the children's and students and teenagers' access to those guns, that we can have an impact on that here locally. So again, I'm looking at, what are we doing? And can we start right here at the school board table? But again, do support the legislative committee as well.
Good. And I'm glad that this is a both and, because absolutely, we can do things right here. And also urge our elected officials to do something, too. So is there an appetite? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? All in favor of moving it to action, say aye.
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 All opposed? It's an action item. Be it resolved that the school board of Independent School District 535 does hereby direct the legislative committee to consider the appropriateness of, and research and draft the content for, a resolution that would recommend actions to enhance school safety to local, state, and federal legislators and policymakers.
With approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Legislative committee, you have your work cut out for you. And I know you'll be getting plenty of input from others. You see the changes to the annual calendar on the, on board docs. We will have a study session at 5:00 on June 14th, a regular board meeting on June 21st, another study session on July 19th, and a regular school board meeting on July 26th. It is 9:00 exactly, and we are adjourned.